Good to see you.
Good to be seen.
Hey Gary. I got it ordered, but it's not in here.
Okay.
Oh, no, I was gonna turn it on.
The chair might move up.
Yeah, I told Mark that.
Stand up. Stand up.
I showed Mark how to order. I didn't come in the first time and make sure we did it right.
Thank you.
I call to order the organizational meeting for January 2nd, 2024, for Etna Township, and the town is bound at 6:00 p.m. Would you like to please stand with me and put in a petition? Bend your head. Heavenly Father, God of the universe, I come to you in prayer today. I want to thank you for this day that you have made. Thank you for allowing me to call on your name in answering our prayers. I thank you for Etna Township and the staff. I pray you continue to protect this township under your mighty hand. I pray for the United States of America, the state of Ohio, and also Lincoln County. I pray for your servicemen and women that are working to keep us safe. I pray you will continue to open these township meetings in prayer. I pray your hand to continue to protect every household in Etna Township. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Role call is Varying.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Burkholder.
Here.
Ms. McKee.
Here.
The meeting is turned over to our fiscal officer Julie Varying for appointments for the president of the board of Etna Township.
I'll open the nominations for board president.
I nominate Mr. Burkholder.
I nominate Mr. Burkholder. Role call.
Mr. Evans.
Mr. Burkholder.
Ms. Burkholder.
Mr. Burkholder.
Ms. McKee.
Mr. Burkholder. Thank you, Ms. McKee.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burkholder, before we continue, I'd like to offer an amendment to the agenda as presented. Will the board consider that?
Ah, yes. Can we first have a motion? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, and then the chair will entertain any motions for amendment. So this time, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? The original agenda that was presented to the board.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Discussion?
Um, as I stated, I think we need to change the agenda to provide some additional items that we need to address. So I'd actually like to make a motion to amend the agenda as presented and for the audience's participation. That's the yellow agenda item is the one I'm proposing we amend it to.
Is there a second to the amendment? Well, we will call for...
Well, I move to amend it.
Yes, we'll leave a second to the amendment, and then we will... Discussion? We will have discussion after a second on the amendment. So is there a second? I'll second. Second by Ms. McKee. Now discussion on the amendment to the original agenda. Okay. Under this revised agenda, I noticed there's no prayer invocation on there. That's why I'd like to then to make sure that continues to be in our opening of our meetings. We've always opened up meetings in prayer. I know you wanted to be a part of Lincoln County party, and I know that all of those meetings are held under prayer. So I would ask that we continue to have prayer on our agenda when we open our meetings. All central committee meetings are open in prayer. So I would ask that that would continue. Does that make a motion? I would like to make that motion. Correct. That's an amendment to the amendment. I'll second the motion to amend the amendment. Is there any further discussion on the amendment to the amendment as far as academic invocation remain on the regular meetings of the Etna Township Board of Trustees?
I'd just like to...
If the organizational art has invocation, you're not on the regular agenda yet.
Which is making an amendment.
I'm making a motion, yes.
She's making an amendment to this, and it's not on the regular. So I'll have Mr. Evans. I'll recognize Mr. Evans at this time.
The only thing I can state is I didn't place it on there because this was going to be after the original one was put forward. So going forward, we can decide that when the president and administrator or whoever creates the agenda, so.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the amendment to retain the invocation on the regular meetings of the board trustees? Hearing no further discussion, I'll ask for the role call, please. Ms. Varying on the amendment to the amendment.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No. Okay, now, well, then it passes. So now, any further discussion on the amendment made by Mr. Evans to amend the organizational meeting agenda? Hearing no further discussion, I'll ask Ms. Varying to roll call the roll, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No. Any further discussion on the amended agenda now as amended? Hearing no further discussion on the amended agenda, I'll ask Ms. Varying to call the roll, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes. No. Okay, we now have an amended agenda. So now we will go to the second item of business under 2B, and that is the nomination for a vice president of the board trustees, and I will nominate Mr. Evans. Are there any other nominations for vice president of the board? Any other nominations? I'll nominate myself. There's a nomination by Ms. McKee for vice president of the board. Any discussion? Role call, Ms. Varying, please.
Mr. Evans?
Evans.
Mr. Burkholder?
Mr. Evans.
Ms. McKee?
Ms. McKee.
Mr. Evans is the vice president of the board. Item C is nomination for a West Lincoln Fire Department or Fire District Board Representative. So are there any nominations for the West Lincoln Fire District Board Representative?
I'd like to nominate myself, Evans.
Are there any other nominations? I would nominate myself.
Ms. McKee?
No further nominations, and any discussions? Role call, Ms. Varying, please.
Mr. Evans?
Evans.
Mr. Burkholder?
Evans.
Ms. McKee.
Ms. McKee.
Item D, the chair will entertain any nominations for representative to the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission Board. I would nominate myself. Are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Mr. Burkholder.
Role call, Ms. Varying.
Mr. Evans?
Burkholder.
Mr. Burkholder?
Mr. Burkholder.
Ms. McKee?
Ms. McKee.
Nomination of representative, this will be item E to representative to the CLOUT. This is the Coalition of Large Urban Townships. It is part of the Ohio Township Association Organization. Are there any nominations for the CLOUT representative?
Mr. Burkholder.
Are there any other nominations? I'll nominate myself, Ms. McKee. Mrs. McKee. Role call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Burkholder.
Mr. Burkholder?
Burkholder.
Ms. McKee.
Ms. McKee. Item F, nominations for the position of supervisor for the township administrator. Are there any nominations?
I believe that should be the president, Mr. Burkholder.
Any other nominations? You said this is for the supervisor of the administrator. Well, that would be the president, and I would nominate Mr. Burkholder. Any other nominations? Role call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Burkholder.
Mr. Burkholder?
Burkholder.
Ms. McKee?
Mr. Burkholder.
Nominations for the representative to the Potashco Area Chamber of Congress. This is the liaison position that meets with the chamber. I would nominate Mr. Burkholder, since you were called before you have moved with it. Thank you. Any other nominations?
Mr. Burkholder, but I would like discussion after closed nominations.
Nominations are closed. Discussion, Mr. Evans?
Yes, I just wanted to make one point that while it may seem that the nominations go heavy to myself or Mr. Burkholder, Ms. McKee does hold eight boards, one's closing, seven active boards that she is on. So this fairly distributes the work.
Can you tell me what those boards are, Mr. Evans, with the residents?
Jed Z1, Jed Z2, Jed 1, Jed 2, Jed 3, Jed 4, Jed 7, the West Lincoln Development Group, CIC, and then also the Economic Development Committee, as well as maybe a few others.
Mr. Evans, of course, I held those positions because I was the president of the board. So I don't want anybody just to make, you know, misunderstanding. So that's why I was on those boards and continue to be on the Jed boards. Those are appointed positions of Jed boards, and they are, they have an expiration date. So that's why he cannot move them from those boards, just to be clear. Thank you, Ms. McKee, and am I correct in your welcome? You still want the chair on the board? Absolutely. Very good. Very good. Thank you. Now we will go for a nomination for community...
Do it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Role call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Burkholder.
Mr. Burkholder?
Burkholder.
Ms. McKee?
Ms. McKee. Oh, I'm sorry. Are we talking about the supervisor?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, like that clue. Yes, Burkholder.
That is for the Potashco area.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Burkholder. I'm sorry.
Okay, now nominations for the communication and public relations. This would be the point person for the township as far as communications and if any public statements or anything that would need to be made to the press. We've had this position before. I think it's important at this time that that be an elected position. So I will open the nominations for the communication and public relations point person for the township. I would nominate Mr. Burkholder.
I nominate Ms. Burkholder.
Any discussion? Role call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Burkholder.
Mr. Burkholder?
Burkholder.
Ms. McKee?
Burkholder. Very good. Thank you. We now come to organizational resolutions. Item A, motion for the administrator to serve as road department supervisor, secretary supervisor, zoning supervisor, safety and FEMA, parks and recreation department, cemetery department, township community, sheriff requests transportation improvement district liaison liaison to the board of zoning appeals, and a liaison to the zoning commission. The chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to administrator to serve as those departments that you disnamed chair.
I'll second.
Second, discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Role call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
B, motion for administrator to supervise and direct between meetings by the president of the board. The president can, shall approve any administrator's time offered. Requests, any disagreements or concerns by the administrator can be brought to the full board and trustees at the township trustee meeting. The chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. McKee. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Role call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Item C, motion directing the administrator and other staff to provide information, documents, and or records upon request by a trustee or the fiscal officer. The chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Second, Ms. McKee?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Is there discussion?
Yes. Okay, so the administrator, Ms. Nina Hansen, will be responsible to provide record requests or the fiscal officer. When did it say "or" the fiscal officer? When does that happen? When do we know that the administrator does it versus the fiscal officer?
The...
I'm sorry.
If I may, Mr. President, this is not regarding public records requests. This is just any topic, record, document, more information.
Okay. That'd be clear, and that because it's a record, it's a private request.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Role call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Item D, motion to adopt the latest version of Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised for meetings with all motions made and not withdrawn to be included in the meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Evans. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second by Ms. McKee. Discussion?
Okay, so we're not, so withdrawals will not be in the minutes? Is that what you're saying? No withdrawal to be included in the minutes, correct?
It's, Mr. Evans, do you?
Yes, Robert's Rules states that all motions should be included in the minutes unless withdrawn. So this follows Robert's Rules. And previously, there was an assertion that it doesn't say "shall." So I believe that any motions made should be included. So that's what this motion.
And the reason why I'm questioning it, just for the public, is because under the prosecutor made it clear that that shall not be struck in the minutes. And this is why I brought that to the attention. There shall not be, if there was a withdrawal, it will not be in the minutes. Can you confirm?
Well, I think, I think the distinction is that if a, if a motion is made but it's not seconded, it is discussion and not actually a motion. That in order for something to be a motion, it must have a second. Otherwise, it is just discussion.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I'm actually going to support this motion because I think it's important to have that detail in the record that any trustee, any of the three of us who make a motion, and for whatever reason, that does not receive a second, I think it's still important to convey that in the minutes so that the community knows that a given trustee, regardless of who it is, has brought forth a motion, and it died for a lack of second. But I think that enhancement to the record and given what we've witnessed over the last couple of years, I think that treats everybody fairly then and shows in documents that they brought a motion, that they had a concern, that they had an idea. So I'm going to support this motion. Is there any other discussion on this motion?
No.
Can I make the call, Mr. Evans?
No, you're out of order.
Mr. Evans?
Role call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Not for it. Item E, motion to set the regular meetings for 2024 for the first and third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 p.m. The organizational meeting will be held Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. And the first regular meeting will be held immediately after the organizational meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Uh, moved by Ms. McKee, seconded by Mr. Evans. Discussion?
Mr. President? May I make a comment?
Yes.
The only thing I would ask the board to consider is that the presidential primary on March 19th falls on one of the meeting nights, and the presidential election on November 5th falls on a meeting night. And so you may want to consider moving those two meetings to a different day so that residents don't have to choose between casting a vote after work or attending our meeting after work for those two important elections.
Any discussion on the administrator's comments?
I'd just like to state that previously, we've had, my election was, we had a meeting that day that was the same in the past. I think with everybody having the opportunity to mail in a ballot, early voting, early day voting, that we should keep a consistency in our meetings, and that's what the public kind of expects. So I would not be in favor of changing that for those reasons.
Any further discussion? Role call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Yes.
Item F, motion to approve the signing of checks for payroll, regular monthly bills, and all previously approved expenditures and purchase orders outside of meetings. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second that discussion. It's my understanding, and I'll defer to my colleagues, that that has been the practice in the past. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
No.
Role call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion, item G, motion to approve payment of required fees and necessary expenses for elected officials to attend and participate in county, state, and national training conferences, seminars, and conventions. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion?
No.
Role call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion to authorize the township trustees, fiscal officer, administrator, and road superintendent a spending allowance per month for township purchases to be used for needed items or services between meetings or for emergencies in the following amounts. The president, 1,000; vice president, 500; trustees, 500; administrator, 500; fiscal officer, 500. The road superintendent shall have a spending allowance of $2,500 per month for township purchases to be used for needed items between meetings with an increase total limit of 5,000 per month authorization for road department emergencies. All authorizations over $2,500 per month require the prior approval of the administrator or board president. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. McKee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second discussion, and I would like to have some discussion here. I think it's important to explain to the public that's the rationale.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, President. In the past, we all, as, I don't know if you guys know this, but I just want to make it clear. Trustees are all equal, okay? They can't, the president or the chair, whatever you want to call them, will control the agenda. Spending limits will all be the same. I don't understand why a president needs 1,000 and the rest of the trustees only gets 500. Makes no sense. So that's my discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Evans, do you have anything?
Yeah, my discussion is that the president's involved in the day-to-day operation of the township, and if things come up, he'll most likely be the one that needs to address some things. We've had a, which we're going to deal with later, a request from the county sheriff on unforeseen expense on windshield repair and other things. And I, I think that's necessary, the other trustees and fiscal officers, it's a minimal amount. Previously, this past year, it was changed to only office supplies, which I think unduly limited it too much. So there's that small amount of discretion, but that the President should have a little bit more. And in the past, it was $2,500 each, and that, that was quite a bit. A road superintendent needs a bit more because of just, that's where the focus of most of the, the activity and expenses are. So if something happens while always following and needs something done, he needs that authority. So I, I think this is, this is appropriate.
Just for the previous meeting, the President of the Board, I never had to expend over that amount, ever. So I just want to make sure that's clear for everybody to know that I've never expended that.
Thank you.
My, my only comment is having previously served in this position and having been at that time, because we didn't have an Administrator, Supervisor over the road department, the only incident I see where we'd have to spend that money is in the case of an emergency, if they couldn't get a hold of the Township Administrator, it's merely a backup to have that authority. There are occasions when you have big equipment, everything out there, or let's say you get stuck in a ditch and you have to authorize a tow truck company. We want to make sure that those purchases are authorized, authorized as emergency purposes. So we've scaled it back a little bit, but I think whether it's myself, or Ms. McKee, or Mr. Evans, if you're the President of the Board, I think many times you might be that first contact. It's not a funny story, but even years after I was out of office, I'd still get calls from the Sheriff thinking that I was on the Board when I wasn't. So it's merely a backup plan, I think, I think the way it's been presented, it's been scaled back a little, I think it's, I think it's a good, a good motion. So I will entertain any other further, any comments to my comments, if anyone has it. Hearing none, I'll ask for the roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
Motion to authorize the road department supervisor an annual road department spending up to $25,000 for fuel. This is in addition to the monthly authorization limit, which was stated previously in item H, and I, I'll entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second, discussion.
Discussion please.
Uh, this is the, I think this year, or this past year, year-to-date, the spending was a little over $20,000. In the past, the authorization, the road department had authorization of the 2,500 a month, but it would routinely exceed it due to things like these standard expenses of fuel and that. So I think dealing with that separately makes sense, and of course, you know, the Administrator is over the road department, so she can monitor her spending as it occurs.
Any other discussion on item I?
No.
Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Item J, mileage reimbursement, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
This is for the 2024 reimbursement at the current IRS rate at the time of reimbursement, sometimes that changes. Is there any further discussion, this is a routine item we pass every year?
No.
Roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item K, motion to contact with health, health consortium for random employee drug and alcohol testing for 2024 for the Administrator to be the Township representative when we have that drug testing, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second, second by Ms. McKee, discussion on this?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. McKee.
Mr. Johnson was a previous consortium, health consortium, now he's not here, but I know Baba Superintendent got trained in this, correct? So he would be that contact. But our Administrator is his direct contact, so are you saying that we want to try to make you that second person? Because we did have a second person, which was Jefferson, and then Baba was that second person, so it would change a little bit now.
Well, I, I would just state that Baba, while he's the super superintendent of the road department, he's also a driver subject to these drug tests, so anybody subject to the test should not be represented in, in point contact. It, it just makes sense that anybody else, and nothing against Baba, that we just don't have people that aren't being tested responsible for the testing. So that's why I, I changed it in this agenda to the Administrator, his supervisor, which makes sense.
I, I'm certainly comfortable with an elected official being responsible for administering that and making sure that protocols were, were followed, but I'm very comfortable with moving that to the Administrator since you are over the day-to-day operations of the employees. And I agree, I think it would be a conflict to have someone that's subject to the test also be the Administrator for that. But I also supported any training that the Township Administrator may need to go through to follow those various protocols. So I think this is, is a good change. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item L, motion to pay the trustees and fiscal officer on a salary basis, by salary according to the Higher Advice Code, equal monthly payments to be paid on the first of the month. I don't know if the community knows, but I'll first take, is there a motion, then a second for this?
I'll second.
Well, so moved.
Wait, did you motion?
Yeah, you want to make the motion?
No, sir.
Ms. McKee, Mr. Evans. The Township trustees, our salaries are set by the size of our budget. So you have an option of taking a, like a per meeting 200 days, or you can take a monthly salary, where you take the per day salary times 200 days, and that's what we've always done in the past. So this motion is passed at the first of the year to authorize what form of payment the trustees and the fiscal officer will have. So it's routine housekeeping, but I wanted to explain how a lot of people think we set our salaries and set by the Higher Advice Code. So any further discussion?
No, sir.
Can you just, just to be clear, it's based on our budget, if it drops, our salary drops. So the budget is what sets our salary out, just to be clear.
Just for clarification, it's the estimated resources, it doesn't matter what the expenditures, expenditures are, are not. It's just what the carryover, whatever revenue we expected that year is, so it's not intentional budget.
Thank you both for that clarification, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion to pay all Township employees every two weeks, the Wednesday following the end of the pay period. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Burke, just.
Go ahead, Mr. Evans.
Um, I think eventually we, we should move to the Thursday following the end of the pay period, just to give the fiscal officer a little bit more time. Because sometimes there are questions about time sheets and that. And I believe the fiscal officer, he, he has to get a couple of days in advance to the payroll company or the banks to get, get that, that deposit in there. I did not put it on Thursday because I believe the union, that might be one of the changes or anything. So I thought we should first talk to the union about any of the changes there before we did. So I would like to maybe possibly address that, because I know sometimes it, it's been a little crunch time for Julie to get, get the payroll.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item N, motion stating that full-time employees are Bob Atkins, Laura Crown, Don Coakley, John Foster, Nina Hansen, Terry Holtz, Nathan Pat.
And Johnson.
And John Singleton. The part-time employee is Freddie Letella and Heybrechts, as certified with the fiscal officer, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Um, yes, there's, I don't know if this was properly timed on, you had a couple, you have John Singleton on there.
Right.
Well, he's still, we'll use him.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms., Mr., Mr. Burkeholder? Am I right?
That's all right, yes, yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Uh, item O, motion to compensate the zoning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals members $55 per meeting, and the chairperson $80 per meeting, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second discussion?
I'd just like to say it's the same as it was before. I don't think we feel that we should increase it, but I, I think it's fine.
Very good. Roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item P, motion to approve the expenditure for members of zoning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and other boards to attend necessary training conferences and seminars. Trustee-approved training conferences and seminars will be compensated with a meeting stipend of $55 plus mileage expense. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? I want to say I've always been a big supporter, our volunteers, I mean, we pay them a stipend, it's not very much for what our DZA and zoning commissions do, and it's a tremendous amount of work, and I invite everyone, if you ever get a chance, go to one of those meetings and, and see the dedication and the work they put into grantvariances and deal with conditional uses and then also these zonings. There's a tremendous amount of work, and so I've always been supportive that anything we can do as the Board of Trustees to give them additional training and education, we should be truly supportive. Some, some individuals have maybe more training or experience in that, and others come in, they want to serve, but they haven't had the training. So I'm very glad to see that we're doing this, and I'm, I'm fully supportive. So is there any other discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item Q, motion changing the Board resolution format, resolutions shall be numbered by the four-digit year, a dash, and then a three-digit consecutive number, starting at 001 annually. Annually, for example, 2024 dash 001, each resolution page shall have a unique number, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Ms. McKee, uh, go ahead, discussion by Ms. McKee.
Okay, on those resolutions, and I know under the commission and some other, I think the water board may use it as well, but you put the, the year, and then, then your 001 or 002, you cannot find, if we need to look for this a year from now, two years from now, 10 years from now, we won't be able to find it. The way the motions are set now, you can go by the date and you can find it. Doing it this way, it's going to be almost impossible to find those resolutions down the line.
May I?
Yes, Mr. Sir, go ahead.
Uh, the reason I'm proposing this is because the current ones we can't find, we, we don't know if we're missing any. We've had, when you make a motion for a resolution, they'll reuse the number. So, and that goes to the minutes of any, any motions made should be recorded, so you have a, you're discussing resolution whatever here, and it's the same on reference here, and, and it's just confusing. Now, a lot of other entities go with this, but that's not just the reason to do it. But this way, it's sequential, if you're missing one, you know it was either not approved or it's missing, so let, let's get it in there. And I would like to get it to a point where if anybody looks at Westerville Township, downtown Cincinnati, great website, great resource, every resolution they have on the website, every, it, we need to get more information digitally, not only for us, because if I need a resolution, it's very difficult to get, but for the public, for transparency. So I, I, I think this is, be much easier, um, system to find and continue.
Well, I, let me just say, I, I see both sides of, of what's been presented here. I, I know looking up resolutions, knowing the month and year helps because then you can go to that month, you might have two meetings you have to look up, but it's a little bit easier to, to find it that way. By the same token, I understand where Mr. Evans is coming, because once we get all of our resolutions into a format to where it can be searched on the website, then you can basically, once you have that resolution, you can go right to that number. And it is a little bit similar convention, and I do believe it is the convention that the Water and Sewer Board uses. But rather than have a lot more discussion on this, I'm, and I'll explain first why I'm going to make this motion. I'd like more information presented from both of my colleagues, as well as Township staff, as what is the best practice, but how do we incorporate that best practice into our current technology with our website? We're obviously going to have to make some changes with our website and how we search records, and that, I don't know how long that'll take, that may take a little bit of time. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion to table and ask if there's a second to table this.
I'll second.
It's seconded by Ms. McKee, once it's tabled, there's no discussion on that, so I'll ask, and I would ask with that that this be placed on the next agenda for presentation and discussion, but, roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Uh, no.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
So that'll be tabled, and we'll take that up to a later date, but I think there are merits on both sides of that discussion. So the Chair at this time will entertain a, um, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Same by Ms. McKee, roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
We stand adjourned.
Do the record at 6:40?
Very good, thank you.
Before you start the next, so we'll use the current light for the ones for the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Julie, do you want me to print you that list so you can log the reservation list?
If anyone needs a break, we'll take a little five-minute recess here, if anyone.
I did try it, because I didn't know which one to call.
We'll, we'll reconvene at 6:46.
Mark, do you want to call?
Yes, leave your mark for five minutes, sir.
That's up to you.
I just would. I think, does he even know how to do that, because I think the Administrator should.
Well, she's running her livestream.
I call to order the, in the township regular meeting Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty-four, at six forty-seven P.M. Could I have the roll call please?
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Burkholder?
Here.
Ms. McKee?
Here.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
And I'd like to offer a motion to amend the agenda as presented. Uh, the yellow sheet, uh, for items I believe we need to address.
Is there a second?
Uh, I will second for discussion in regards to the prayer not being longer and longer.
And since we made that amendment at the organizational meeting, we will have that on at the next regular meeting.
So we, so we might be putting that on the, on the agenda for now, or?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I, I would just like to point out, Ms. McKee's agenda for this meeting does not have the prayer because when you have two meetings in a day, you don't have the prayer. And our special meeting that Ms. McKee held on December twenty-sixth had not a prayer or the pledge.
Mr. Mr. Evans, please be honest and tell that we came in here for a one item to be approved and walked out. That was it. This is a different setup. This is an official business meeting.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment to the adoption of the agenda? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call for the amendment to the agenda.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Now, any further discussion on the main motion of adopting the amended agenda? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Now we come to my favorite part of the meeting, public comments. So you'll, you'll have up to three minutes. Uh, please state your name and address for the record. Come to the podium, please. The mic is on. Um, I'll give you a heads up. Uh, when we get to one minute, I'll say one minute so you know you have about that much time. And then when I say time, if you could wrap it up at that time so we give everybody an opportunity if they want to make comments here tonight. So is there anyone that would like to make public comments at this time? You have a limit of three minutes. I'll get my phone ready so that I give you the full three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment, sir? Please come up, state your name and address for the record, and let me go ahead and make sure I give you the full time, so if you want...
I'll save that much time.
Oh, okay.
Uh, my name is Johnny Crummins, nine six seventeen Windsor Road. I'm, I'm mainly here just to hope that the new board will get on Skene's ass to get the wall fixed. You know, I'm tired of seeing, tired of seeing the light on for you, you know, like a Motel Six. I'm tired of hearing the slamming of the trucks, the slamming of the trailers, you know, in the middle of the night. Hopefully, you know, you stay on them and buy them if they're not going to follow through with what they're, they said they would do last year. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
It's all mine.
Uh, thank you, and I, I can respond to that under trustee comments, but I appreciate that. Anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Mr. President, is the mic going on?
Vicki Halsel, nine six four six Windsor Road. I just want to welcome Gary to the Township Board and look forward to working with you on Skene.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You might just have to tip it down a little bit.
Anyone else that wants to speak at this time, public comments, please?
Sally Marie, well, I'm on Royalty Drive, and I'm glad we're going to have a prayer next week, or next meeting, and I missed a prayer, so if it's allowable, I'll use some of my time, and I will say the Lord's Prayer. And anyone who would like to say it with me, welcome to join me. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we do not give temptation, but deliver us from evil. For the love of the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Thank you, that meant a lot to me.
Thank you.
And regrettably, I missed the last couple trustee meetings. I still wanted to thank Jeff for his many years of service. I never knew Jeff before, um, but I did get to meet him a few times and sort of attend one of the committee committees, and he, I found him to be a man of integrity and a lot of knowledge, so all the best to him and welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to see, um, add for the appointments that you do, organizational chart. Um, I know Ross has been on a lot of the wards and things, and, um, she's seen, I was a lot of the things as well, I would show up for, you know, things with public, and I know she works hard and did it in time, so I'm, I like to, I'm glad to see that everybody's involved. And I thank you, thank you for that. And I said this two years ago, it's like we have, with all of your guys, strong points in your backgrounds and everything. We have, we have a potential dream team, so it's a new year, a better time for do-over, and, you know, we worked out all the kinks, and I'm excited for, for our future. Um, and also, the last couple meetings that I missed, I did listen to on the YouTube.
One minute.
That one, thank you. And there's some things, my background is fiscal services, and there were some things that caught my eye. I've had been involved more closely with the state auditors for over a dozen years, and some things I heard might, might be some possible red flags coming up. They, they really do, they're, they are interested in all the numbers. If there's a number on there, like I heard of the comment, they're not really interested in them, just those numbers. The auditors really are interested in all of the numbers. And, um, there is, we've done a lot of transfers and things in my past, and transfers are common, but if it does look excessive, or it's referred to as shuffling, or it's just shuffling, it happens all the time. Like, if that was said in an audit, that would be a red flag, you know? So just something, I thought I'd share my experience with my audits and, and some clean ones. So, thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time?
John Canard, one oh seven eight five Palmer Road. Welcome, Gary.
Thank you.
I got this in the mail today, and it's really, it's brilliant, it's a real nice advertisement, and it's a happy new year, and I don't know how many residents got this, but I'm sure a lot of you guys will appreciate the return. I would appreciate my federal return and my tax return. I know there's some, one, one trustee that was against this, he thought we all want to get a Happy Meal. I was going to get him one, but there was out of toys and the line was long, so I couldn't do that tonight, I'm sorry. But I know they put on Facebook and, and on the internet that they think that that ought to be paying their bills and not, you know, sending money back to the residents and thanking them for what's happened, success this year, so. That's my speech, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else at this time, public comments? Oh, I just asked if anyone else had any in the public comments.
Stephen Paul, seventy-six Nantucket Avenue, Baton, Ohio.
Okay.
Uh, look, few concerns. Does any one of the board members here familiar with the Ohio revised code five oh four point oh four? Dealing with inventory?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, who was responsible for the inventory last year? Who was responsible for the authorized signed-off inventory? Was it you, Mr. Burkholder?
Well, no, it wasn't, I wasn't here.
Was it you, Mr. Evans?
I know.
Was it you, Ms. McKee? Did you sign off on the inventory for the personal property, the taxpayers' property, and then the township? You're the only person here that can speak to that. Could you please address it? What? You're not going to answer me?
No, sir. Go ahead with your comments.
Okay, under higher revised code, all property must be inventoried, one dollar or above. The missing server has mysteriously showed up.
That's not true.
Excuse me, my time, you're interrupting me.
Now, let's keep it simple.
Thank you. All right, so if the property was not properly inventoried, and Ms. McKee would...
K E, okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, and you were responsible for it.
Are you not in violation of Ohio revised code five oh four, one, one oh four? Or excuse me, point oh four? Okay.
Well, well, Ms. McKee will have an option, I'll give you extra time. She will have an option if she wants to answer any questions or any other trustee, under trustee comments, but to keep the meetings moving along, you've asked a question, we can give back to you. I don't know the answer, I will tell you, I'm going to give you extra time. Let me answer it right now. Thank you. These are some of the things that the, this new board is going to be working on to make sure that we get the inventory correct and, and get a property file, so thank you for, go ahead, I'll give you extra time.
In addition, I understand that in public records, am I supposed to address it to the, who am I supposed to request public records from? Is it the administrator? Is that correct? The township administrator?
We would ask the, all to the administrator, since she's full-time and can address this.
Okay, so under Ohio revised code, it does not have to be placed in writing. Therefore, I'm making a public statement. I would like the phone records from Ms. McKee's private phone paid for by taxpayers' dollars and her text messages for the last three months be made available. Okay? And I would make sure that I address it to the proper person. However, this is not required under Ohio law to be placed in writing, so I'm putting it right now to the...
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, Mr. Burkholder, welcome to that new township.
Thank you.
So you've been there four years.
Anyone else at this time has public comments? Anyone? I want to give everybody the opportunity, thank you very much, and now we'll get into old business, and this is item four on the revised agenda. It's the twenty twenty-four permanent appropriations. Uh, they were not passed at the last meeting, so we have, I will entertain a motion regarding this.
Mr. Burkholder, this folder is just everything that she, she sent out. I was able to print it all on it, and then we're going to report.
Right, thank you.
Where's the resolution? I'll move resolution, uh, twenty-four, uh, twenty-four dash oh one dash oh two dash oh one, resolution to adopt permanent appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion?
Second by Ms. McKee. Um, do we need to, under discussion, do we need to amend that number since we did not change the convention of number?
No, I, I stated the...
Correct.
Previous one.
Previous one, okay, fine. Ms. McKee, do you have a floor for discussion?
Yeah, I just said, someone?
Yeah.
Uh, that was my question, with the resolution number, it's...
Okay.
Sorry, I had...
And then as far as discussion, I mean, we, we went over this budget previously. Uh, I believe everybody's had input, um, on this, so, um, I know there were some changes in, in some of the, the numbers, the revenue, uh, because of, we, we had some revenue that came in that we were expecting next year, uh, so those were the changes, but otherwise, I believe this variant, everything else is the same. Um, so I, I'm comfortable with it, and I, I believe we should pass it. I think moving forward, we need to start the budget process much earlier and have a budget passed in December so that we don't have any issues, uh, you know, going into the new year.
Yeah, I think everyone understands that township cannot expend any money in twenty twenty-four without passing an appropriate appropriation or a temporary project. This will be a permanent approp- appropriation, and it was stated at the last meeting, just because you appropriate the money doesn't mean you have to spend it, but you can't spend anything before you appropriate it. So we have, we have insurance premiums to pay, salaries to pay, so I support this budget. I also support getting much, starting much earlier this new year, two thousand twenty-four, on the budgeting process. Many communities start in July or August, is my previous experience, and so at that time, I'll bring forward in the next meeting or two that we had a workshop earlier in the year, July or August, and begin to have discussions, and it'll be a public meeting, but it'll be a workshop, and begin to really ask our administrator, our fiscal officer, and all three trustees what we would like to see for the year two thousand twenty-five. So this is one of the things that we're looking forward to changing. Is there any further discussion on the budget?
Mr. President, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, you may.
Will you, um, can we have clarity about what is Exhibit A to this resolution? Of the documents that have been provided, are all of the documents cumulatively Exhibit A, or is there just one particular document that is Exhibit A to the resolution?
In the resolution, I just need to know which...
For the fiscal year test, year two is Exhibit A, which would be the...
Is it this one?
Yes.
All the, okay. So attach this to the resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question and clarification. Thank you for that question and clarification. And further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
No.
New business. We have a resignation from the park committee, so I will entertain a motion, please read the entire motion.
I'll move to accept the resignation of Craig Zacker from the park committee and advertise for the open seat with applications or letters of interest due by Friday, January 26th at 5:00 P.M.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. McGee, discussion.
Just, I think everybody's got the email dated December 20th from Mr. Zacker. And I just think that we have an opportunity, we can replace him or we can add a few more members to the committee. So, depending on how much interest we have, but this is going to be a real gem for the township and more participation, the better.
Yeah, we want to be careful about the amount of people that we have on that committee. We're working with M H and T and they, they've done this for a long time. So they kind of know how many people should be on the committee to start out when you're starting building a park. The unique thing about it is you're not just, the same people are not going to be on the park committee. They're come and go, new people, depending on the background, depending on where we are as far as the layout. So it's not just something that we just came up with as a trustee to decide on who would be on that park committee. A, M, A, what is it, H M and T? B M and T are the experts in that area. And they recommended a certain amount of people on the committee and some of the background they should have as well.
I would just like to open this up to more individuals because one of the originals were appointed. There was no interview, there was no, they were just selected. So I think moving forward, it'd be nice to have a more open process.
Very good. Thank you for the comments, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Will you tell me how you wish to have the position advertised? When we formed the committee in the beginning, we set out an announcement through our normal email, what I call a listserv, and we advertised it on our webpage. Do you want us to follow that same format?
Do my colleagues have any input in that regard?
No, that's fine, and I'll promote it also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, resolution continuing employment without outside legal counsel.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on resolution 24-01-02-02, employing township attorneys on an annual basis for the year 2024 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion. And that's with Ben? Al, Albrecht? Albrecht? Albrecht?
It's with official Donnie Albrecht and Ripponoff. They're, we're just continuing that service, just for the public to know that prosecutor is our appointed attorney. However, on specialty matters, they suggest that we defer it to outside counsel. Mr. Albrecht was the one that handled the union negotiations and also the creation of or updating of the employee handbook. So I think it's important, if we have any questions, and some already arose today.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Item C, resolution modifying previous motions and resolutions from Mrs. McGee to the board president, resolution 24- who would that be, Mr. Evans?
It'd be 24-01-02-03.
Changing authorized contact signer and representative as presented, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. McGee. Let me, I'd like discussion on this first. This is merely a procedural thing, rather than naming a specific individual and having to change that every year. We're changing it to whomever the president of the board may be for that specific year. This also helps, particularly when you're dealing with a prosecutor or outside counsel. They prefer to have one point of contact with the township rather than having three trustees all calling, asking for different things. So it somewhat streamlines it. I know previously, Ms. McGee as the president was the point of contact. So this is merely some housekeeping work that rather than having a person's specific name, we're the president of the board.
Okay, so let me...
Ms. McGee, go ahead.
Sorry, Ms. McGee.
No, go ahead.
But I just, this is just for authorized contract signer or representative. Now, when you say representation or representative as presented, are you talking about the prosecutor's office?
Yes.
Well, no, you can't do that because the prosecutor represents the whole board. So I have the authority to talk to them, you do as well as Mr. Evans. So that will not, that's not something, and they recommended that as well, so you cannot make that recommendation.
I, Mr. President, the motion for the prosecutor's single point of contact is actually F. This one deals with all the past, and 22 and 23 were Ms. McGee instead of saying that the board president has authority. She motions, Ms. McGee has the authority, trustee McGee has the authority. So it's just changed to the board president and excludes any appointments to the JUDZ 1 and 2, JUD 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, West Leaking development groups.
Wait, Mr. Evans, you're not being honest.
And what that, what that means is that exclusion means that you still are the representative on those boards.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, Mr. Burkeholder. What my concern is when he made the statement that I will not have a contact with the prosecutor, that's not true. Every trustee has the right to speak with the prosecutor. And that's how it's set up. What happens, if I send a prosecutor an email, they will respond back to the three of us. If he sends it, it's we all, so we're never out of the loop. Mr. Evans has always been able to contact the prosecutor, so is Mr. Johnson. And we want to make it to this, so you know, Mr. Evans, that cannot be so. They represent the board, that's who we contact. That's who represents the township board is the prosecutor.
Okay, Mr. President, just quickly.
So you should probably do that on a separate resolution.
Well, rather than, I know there's been disagreement in the past board on this issue. My experience has been that the board, if you have to refer something to the prosecutor that you bring up in a meeting, it's directed to the prosecutor, comes back to the president. And you are correct, all trustees, including if the fiscal officer is involved in that issue, should be included as well. So it's not only streamlining, but it's making certain that the full board is apprised of any kind of opinion or response from the prosecutor. I don't want to relitigate some of the disagreements of the past. I hear your point, I'll take that, I hear your point on this as well.
Just one quick, again, the motion for prosecutor, that's an F, it's not included in this, this motion here, but the prosecutor did recommend one point of person on November 29th. And I think we could deal with that on the...
Okay, so as far as outside counsel, thank you. And as far as outside counsel, we don't want three different trustees calling in and maybe having differing opinions. And so you're getting three different opinions and it creates conflict here. And they don't know to whom they should be directing that opinion. So I think this is a good motion. Any further discussion? Thanks for the clarification, Ms. McGee. If nothing else from my colleagues, I will ask for the roll call case.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
No.
Item D, motion to rescind the named individual sent on 11/21/23 to Grovelaking County. Chair will entertain a motion.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Evans.
I'll move to rescind the named individual suggested for the next open Grovelaking County seat as stated in the letter dated November 21st, 23 to Grovelaking County and the commissioners.
Are we in a discussion right now?
No, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second, Ms. McGee, discussion.
Okay, I know Mr. Evans has John Singleton as a conflict of interest. Just to be clear, if that's the case, he has no public rights. So if that's the case, the mayor should not be on there, the commissioner should not be on there, it wouldn't keep going on and on. So that's misinformation there. So there's no conflict, the answer is had Mr. Singleton been on that board. So if that's the case, then, you know.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, this is, again, I believe it is a conflict within our township. If other townships or entities want to do whatever they want to do, that's fine. However, again, this, this was a suggestion that really wasn't board contrived. So I think when it comes time, if there's an open seat, we can have a discussion on the board.
And the reason why we chose Mr. Singleton at the time, Mr. Singleton is our zoning manager. He knows the lay of the land, he knows, and when you're, when you're dealing with Grovelaking County, it's all about development. It's all about what can fit and what can go where, what things, how things are zoned. So all that makes sense that he was selected for that position. But, of course, there's other, you know, thoughts that, that's why, and me being a board member...
For decision, I don't think we need input. And the township should have a representative on Grovelaking County, and previously was an elected official. So I'll just give you my opinion to the board. It shouldn't be an elected official. We are responsible for the economic development. I understand the previous board had their reasons for doing that, I don't share those same reasons. I think when we do appoint a representative, we need someone that has extensive or at least some experience with economic development. I happen to have that type of experience, I'm not saying I would be the appointee. Right now it's a moot point because we don't have an opening on Grovelaking County. But I think it's important at this time that Mr. Singleton, as a zoning inspector, not administrator, but inspector, would not be the recommendation that I would have to place on that board. So this is merely a motion so that we can communicate to Grovelaking County that the new board, that would not be our selection, but we are interested in a position once it comes open. And they've advised there's no position open at this time. That's my position, anything else from my colleagues?
No, sir.
Ms. McGee? Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, item B, motion to remove trustee McGee's authorization on the star account, which is our investment account, our savings account for the township, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll, I move to remove trustee McGee's authorization on the township star account.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second, Ms. McGee, discussion.
Well, I, I mean, I'm no longer the president of the board, so it makes sense.
Yeah, and I, my discussion is I don't even want to be on that either. I think there has to be segmentation and oversight, so I think it should be the fiscal officers. So, I really don't support any trustee having signature capability. So it's nothing against you, Ms. McGee, you were the president of the board. But moving forward, I don't, I don't think we should have a trustee on that, that's the kind of checks and balances.
Well, we need two signatures on there, that's...
But that was not necessary for additional signature.
So if it comes down to it, if they call for two signature and you said that there does not need to be a trustee elected official, we would ask for maybe the administrator to lead the process.
I'll be happy to entertain anything, we can look into this and see what the best practice is. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Item F, motion for the president to be the appointed person for the prosecutor's office and other legal counsel. Chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that the president of the board be the singular contact of Grovelaking County prosecutor's office and all outside counsel unless specifically authorized by the president, and that all trustees are to be copied on all prosecutor and counsel communications.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
We have a second, and Ms. McGee, you're recognized for the discussion.
Yes, so back to what we said, I said before, the prosecutor represents the board. We're all equal, just want to make that clear. The president does control the agenda, but legal counsel, I get that, I understand it, it's true. They do need one person to be the contact for legal counsel. But when it comes to the prosecutor, which represents the whole board, we all have equal access. Mr. Evans had equal access, Mr. Johnson had equal access. I'm not sure why all of a sudden it wants to change, I have no idea.
Well, that's, that's the best, best practice that I was used to. And anything that you want to bring to the prosecutor, Ms. McGee, we can certainly, I think those kinds of things that we have concerns about should come to the board and then we, but that singular point of contact, the prosecutor has many jurisdictions. So it's not to cut out any trustee from bringing an issue to the board. I think it does lend itself to transparency and then having that single voice. Because I know in the past, and the prosecutor will tell you, there are multiple townships that you get dueling trustees. And they each say, hey, I want this opinion, I want that. So, no disrespect to you or how it's operated in the past, I think this does streamline it. I know Mr. Evans has some opinions on it, if you'd like to...
Just briefly, the prosecutor actually requested that, again, there's a singular point of contact in an email dated November 29th, 2023. She reiterated that they have 55 clients that they, that they address. And they need a singular point of contact. And that's where I placed this motion, that all trustees and the fiscal, or all trustees are to be copied on communications because that was not done in the past. And that is with the prosecutor and all outside counsel. Because of the past, I was excluded from any communications with the outside counsel. So, this treats everybody equally. If anybody wants anything through there regarding resolutions, motions, it goes through the president, which I think is orderly.
Ms. McGee, I'll give you the last word.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm not fine with it, but...
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
There's often times that I reach out to the prosecutor's office for contract determination, to review contracts. Do you not want me to have contact with the prosecutor's office outside of your contact with them?
Well, I think that's something we need to work out administratively. So I would welcome your input on that because I realize in the day to day operations, there are things that you're not going to wait till another board meeting to come to and have that contact. So I do think that's something we need to flesh out so that we can keep the functioning operations going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. President, in the motion, it covers that because the president can't authorize others. So, at your choosing, and you're the supervisor to the administrator, you can say, on these contracts or any contracts, you can initiate that, but copy all trustees. So I think that's handled in the motion.
And thank you for that question, so we have clarification. Will you pass that, is that correct? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
No.
Okay, item G, resolution authorizing representatives concerning records of the trouble aggregation agreement resolution. Go ahead, Mr. Evans.
All right, I move resolution number 24-01-02-04, resolution authorizing representatives concerning records of the trouble aggregation agreement as presented. This was presented to the prosecutor. This is just authorizing myself and the looking company prosecutor and any counsel as representatives. I attempted to get records from that aggregator previously. In 2014, there was a contract which limited their fees. And I wanted to make sure that they charged those specific fees and didn't increase them over the 10 years that were in place. There were numerous other contracts where they were, we were being overcharged. So I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to ensure this. My access to this was blocked before, it had been a board action. So that's why we're putting in resolution form and acting as a board. So if this is passed, I'll look forward to getting the records and confirming that the customers were charged the proper amount.
I apologize, did I have a second on that?
No, you didn't.
Okay, thank you. Is there... Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Oh, I thought Ms. McKee did.
No, I did not, but I'll second.
Okay, second, and I apologize for that out of order. Um, Ms. McKee, do you have some things you'd like to say?
You can do that. Guards to that, no, I don't.
Okay, very good. I'm supportive of this, we have a lot of questions going through this contract. I attended those meetings, I was not pleased at all by the, uh, the way that the board was treated, in my opinion. And the representatives would not answer questions. And so I, I think this is something we definitely need to look into. So I support this resolution to ask more questions on this. And we were told by those, their representatives that we needed to have board action to do this. And now we have the ability to have board action on that, so I'm going to support this. Is there anything else from either trustee?
Mr. President, clarification on the motion, I'm going to stop after presenting it and put my extended discussion.
Yeah, that would be fine, thank you for that correction. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
Okay, item H, motion on township key lockbox motion.
Uh, I'll, I move the following, one, require staff officials to disclose the location of township lockbox of keys immediately. Two, administrative shall have lockbox installed in its previous location, provide inventory of all contained keys and provide list of individuals with keys. Three, access code being provided to the fiscal officer. Four, access code shall be available to all trustees and administrator.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Ms. McKee, is there discussion on this? And I know there's probably going to be a lot of discussion on this, but let's try to be succinct on this. So I'll open it up for discussion to the trustees.
I, I'd just like to say that it was, the lockbox, uh, was available to all trustees. We have oversubscribed the entire township, it was removed, location not disclosed. So I just want it returned, everybody had equal access to it, it's about being equal. Uh, so that's what this is about.
As a trustee, never had to use a lockbox, never had to use the keys. So I have, we'll really say on that other than I have no problem with it at all.
Why was it then? I, I would just like to say that I, I've been locked out of that conference room, records rooms, that, and that, that's why they removed the lockbox of keys because I, I had access to it, so.
Was there anything ever missing or taken or borrowed or anything like that out of the zoning office?
Well, I would support this, uh, the residents have elected all three trustees, so all three of us should have access to this. This is part of the oversight, that's the only comments I have, I support this motion. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Uh, item Y, motion to produce original township security, uh, NVR and SD cards. This was the original security systems, uh, the chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll move the following, one, to direct the staff and officials to disclose the location of the video security NVR originally installed on October, or, on October 20th, 2022, along with camera SD cards. Two, to direct the administrator to preserve all video, uh, security footage on the township hall system and any video records requested as a public record, uh, request on the garage videos security system. And three, the original township hall NVR and SD card shall be produced and secured by the fiscal officer.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second, Ms. McKee, you have a second.
Um, Mr. Johnson made it clear at our last meeting or meeting before that he was the one that removed the DVR or, yeah, the, the NVR and placed it in safekeeping, he made it clear. I never had, I never touched it, never had my hands on it. I know I look like a person that would steal. Because I, that's just what some people stare at, people like me, which is sad. So just to be clear, I never had the, the NVR, it's in lock and key somewhere. Uh, Mrs. Brown probably knows where it is by now. But Mr. Johnson made it clear, he removed it, I never touched it. So.
Just, just brief.
Just make it clear, because if one person says it, doesn't make it true.
Well, I know there's varying opinions on this, but there have been public records requests for this. I know there's disagreement on it, but that system was disabled in October, full disclosure. I made a public record request, I know others have. The whereabouts of that, uh, the NVR and those SD cards was never revealed until recently. And, um, I'll be honest, this is something I talked about during the campaign season, that it is a public record in my opinion. But all three trustees need to know where that item is. There, those videos are a public record in my opinion, that data needs to be preserved and protected. And this directs, as I think is inappropriate, for the township administrator to disclose where that, that data is and that equipment, to make sure it is properly secured and to move forward with providing those public record requests. Now, we may need to have outside legal counsel, we need to have the prosecutor to comment on this. But I know this is a major issue, if we're going to have security cameras, and they've been disabled for over a year. I know for a fact that we've had at least two falls outside on the staircase, and those were not recorded because we had no security system. So I think it's very important, those are my comments, is there anything else?
Uh, just briefly, the evidence ticket, uh, to the investigation firm was from Ms. McKee, so she did state that she did have it. Uh, my concern is, for the longest time, nobody would say anything where it's at. Nobody here still knows where it's at. At least, at least, Ms. McKee, please. Uh, and we need to be transparent, these are not our records, these are the public's records. These are, this is the public's building, this is the public's podium. Uh, so I, I think we, we need to, again, all trustees need to have equal information and access, and this is what's being provided.
Okay, um, I will get with the township administrator and follow up on this, is there anything else?
I just have one question, Mr. President. Is it the intention of this motion to alter the currently existing records retention policy of the township? And if so, I think there's a process for doing that by, by seeing, but your instruction about saving the video, I think that's.
Uh, as far as what?
In terms of maintaining, to preserve all video security footage? I don't know, I think, as it's written, it's a broadly intended and it may alter the records retention.
It's not my intention to change the record retention schedule. But that data was requested back in October, and the township has been advised to preserve that data, data as a result of those public record requests. So we can deal with the records retention, which I intend to hold a meeting hopefully within the first month of this new year. But the intention is to preserve the data that's already been requested. But that is another item that I think the township definitely needs to review is not only retention of records, but particularly our security video. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion on access to legal record or communication, motion to authorize all trustees access to legal records and communications from the prosecutor and all outside counsel, with the exception of any fiscal officer, privileged legal records or communications, is there a motion?
Uh, so if.
There's a second.
I'll second for discussion. I want to be clear, because I'm not understanding if fiscal officer privileged legal records or communications.
That is a separate office, a separately elected office in this case. Ms. Barry was appointed, but it is an elected public official separate from the board of trustees. So we wouldn't violate, want to violate any privileged legal between the fiscal officer and the prosecutor. Anything else from, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
Item K, motion on administrator's written report. Is there a motion?
I'll move to direct administrator to provide the board and fiscal officer a written administrative report the Wednesday prior to a regular meeting. Should additional items or information be added before the meeting, a written report addendum shall be provided to the board and fiscal officer in advance of the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second, discussion?
I, I just think this is a good change in practice, uh, from oral reports given day of, uh, where we're not, or at least I wasn't privy to what was going to be discussed. This way, all trustees, fiscal officer, are made aware of what is going to be presented at the meeting and, and discussed.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
Item L, motion for shared file, shared file access, read-only access for records production authorized representatives to dynamic networks.
Uh, may I make a motion?
You may, sir.
Uh, I move the following, one, to direct administrator to implement document sharing, working files, shared calendars and programs. Two, to direct administrator to verify all township computers, data, data stores, uh, systems, programs, and emails are properly backed up. Three, authorize and provide each trustee read-only access to all township emails in cloud storage, excluding trustees and fiscal officer email in cloud storage. Four, to remove the previous authorization, providing all email access by Ms. McKee and Ms. Hanson. And five, designate authorized representatives to dynamic networks as the president and vice president.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second, discussion?
Okay, um, when he talked about removing previous authorization, providing all email access by Ms. McKee, never had email access, never had that access as well as. So let's clarify that, Mrs. Hanson has that, she should, she's the administrator. That's who should have the access. She should hold passwords, um, if there's a password to get into our, we decide the cameras backed up, and she should have that access. Uh, that's what administrators do. I work on the cloud, Ms. Burkholder, eventually when you start your cloud forum meeting, you'll get to know some other great, uh, administrators. They're set up a certain way, administrators do a lot. And one of them, they are responsible for authorization, like getting data, uh, getting to, able to have passwords, me being, um, not the fiscal officer. That's not their job.
May I have a brief discussion?
Go ahead, and then I'll have my comments.
Okay, uh, there was a motion made by Ms. McKee, giving herself and Ms. Hanson, uh, access to the emails. Um, so that was done. And regarding the administrator's access to the emails, right now they're upon advice of counsel, uh, that should not be given, uh, due to, I don't know, uh, how to say it, uh, uh, possible, or due to a matter that's, we're, we're going through right now. Um, so again, with legal counsel, she should not have access to our emails uh, to possibly see privileged communications. And I, I think, again, uh, we're moving away from a singular control of everything to, to more openness. And I, I think some of this stuff of, uh, the read-only access, uh, is needed to discover just what, what's been done in the past because nothing's been shared. Uh, so I, I think these are needed, and if, maybe in the future, when, when we kind of get in the right direction, get things going, we can make modifications. But at this time, I think this is needed.
Um, I just want to also clear for the record, our administrator is a, she is an attorney. She knows attorney-client privilege, she is a practicing attorney. So she would not have, she would know, going through the emails, if there's a public record, she would know. Because it says attorney-client privilege, she would not read that, she would not get in that.
But even the subject matter didn't disclose something?
Okay, let me have a few comments on that, any policy, there's a lot of policy here tonight, and I appreciate the patience of the community, but I, the reason I support this is I strongly feel there needs to be some major changes on how we do business and our practices and our procedures. I will say this, though, as a trustee, I certainly am willing to revisit any of these policies that need to be fine-tuned. But there's a lot of good things in this, for example, the backups and those kinds of things, we do have questions on that. I'm not putting this, this is not a commentary on our township administrator, because I don't know yet. But I think these are areas that we as a collective, not just the president, but the board, need to be looking at these practices, particularly when it comes to public documents and public records. And what is our security system, and what is our capability of backing up these records? So this is somewhat of a due diligence, there may need to be some tweaks to this down the road. But I think it's more important to get these implemented tonight and then go forward from there, with the board working together with our administrator as well. So that concludes my remarks, any other comments or any, one else on board?
Mr. President, may I make a, a comment?
Yes.
My only access to email was in response to public records requests. I don't have access, well, I have access to the township, um, general email. I can see those emails. Um, but I otherwise have no access to any email except to, um, do the search in response to public records requests.
Very good, I appreciate that, that clarification. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Item M, motion streamline video security production, uh, this is, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll, I'll move to remove Brochus, Johnson, and Greg as the intermediary for any video security record access or production, access and request of records to be produced normally.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, discussion?
I, I just want to state, the reason for this was before, when there, there was a question about the video records that the previous board, uh, had the outside counsel as the person that would deal with that. And you're just putting layers in there across, uh, so, um, it should just be handled as, as a regular record.
And the reason for that is because we didn't have an administrator back there. And so we had to rely on our legal counsel to be that administrator to take care of this kind of stuff, so.
Well, I, I accept both, both comments there, that seems to make sense. And so now we can move forward with it, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, thank you. Motion to file passwords with fiscal officer, chair will entertain a motion.
Yes, I'll move the following, one, all township hall employees, employees, the minister, secretary, zoning inspector, and assistant zoning inspector, and elected or appointed officials shall provide logins and passwords within five business days to fiscal officer of all systems, programs, equipment they are in control of, have access to, or knowledge of. Two, the logins and passwords shall be maintained by the fiscal officer, any change to, uh, password or login shall be provided to the fiscal officer within three business days. Three, access to logins and passwords are permitted by the trustees with fiscal officer maintaining a log with this provided, uh, any login or, and/or passwords.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, go ahead.
Yes, sir. My background is information technology, I have degrees in security, there are certifications. I worked for the state of Ohio for 30-something years. There is no way you are going to have anybody's password for no circumstances. Now, with that being said, you should not have my password, I should not have your password, vice versa. Laura, right now, she's our executive secretary. Ms. Hanson is the administrator, she's the supervisor, okay? She doesn't have Laura's password, but she can go and look at her emails, read only. But as far as passwords, there's no way. And that, and if you want to go further with it, you'll look under Ohio Revised Code. I don't have it right here in front of me, I'm sorry, I had it and left, left it on my desk. Um, there's no way we should be having access to each other's computers or passwords. So I would never support that.
I have a brief discussion, Mr. President. The password should be contained or be secured by the fiscal officer. Uh, my motto is, if, if you get hit by a bus, the operation needs to continue. If, if an employee is the only one that has a password to their computer, to the Dropbox, to the. If an employee is the only one that has a password to their computer, to the Dropbox, to the whatever, that's not appropriate. And to remind the board, we have oversight responsibility of the entire township. And to state that any employees write to a township computer system login or anything supersedes our duties is, I think, just not proper. So again, the fiscal officer will maintain those, and anybody accessing those will be logged. And if the board has a problem with it, that can be addressed at that time. But at this moment, I don't know who has a password, is there any given password for the security door system? So if something happens to the one employee that happens to know that, how are we supposed to continue in an efficient manner? So again, this is, this is just proper due diligence and operation of an entity.
I would ask that you get the Ohio Revised Code and show me who the fiscal officer is responsible for those details. She's not, he's not.
I would just like to add, the employee handbook actually states that too.
Okay, here's my opinion on this. I support this here tonight, but Ms. McKee, I will be more than glad to, if you want to revisit this with best practice and submit some, you know, additional information, I'm certainly open to that. I think, I think the point is making, we do need to have continuity. If someone leaves and we don't have access to that computer, that is a problem. Someone leaves, we need to secure all the data and everything on that, whether it's a laptop or server, whatever. So I'm certainly willing to revisit this because IT is a very specialized field, and there probably aren't new and best practices, but I would rather have this in place now so we get some continuity and we do have some control. And of course, those passwords then need to be very highly guarded so that they don't fall into the hands of security.
Correct.
Upping our security in all aspects, particularly in cyber hacking and cybercrime, I think is important. So, but I'm willing to revisit it, I'm going to support this tonight, but I appreciate the comments. Comments for both of you. If there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes.
In what form or fashion and what method would you like us to use to transmit passwords to the fiscal officer? Since I think they should not be done through email.
I agree, and we had that discussion earlier today, so I agree with that, and I think we need to get together. And again, some of these implementations will probably take some time. So some of that direction to you, Ms. Hanson, I don't expect it to, now this has some timetables on it.
Right, I was just going to say.
But I think, and so I think we need to be reasonable, since there's a lot here, how much and how long it's going to take to implement some of these things. So I appreciate that question.
Thank you.
And I think it needed clarification, we want to be reasonable about this, but I do think we need to make some policy changes.
And I just want to be cautious, just emailing passwords, somebody gets on somebody's email, I mean, computer, logs in remotely, whatever. You may, you're looking at a lawsuit, so I just want to make that clear.
And regarding providing passwords within the time, I think that is reasonable. If you just provide in written form, she can put it in the safe, and then we could figure out going from there. But I think, as we've seen today, we had an employee abruptly resign, and we've got to be prepared.
Very good, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No. Item B, motion on interior township hall office lights remain on during open public hours.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion required the township hall office lights to remain on when open to the public and during working hours.
Is there a second?
I'll second discussion.
Second discussion, please.
The reason I made this is because numerous times I've come in here, it's been dark, you think we're closed. I've had numerous complaints from residents that said it feels unwelcoming to come in here. And I think we should operate professionally and have the lights on during normal business hours.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I know in the summer months, it's very bright in that work area, so they don't have the lights on, the lights are open. So there's a lot of light that comes in. So we preserve, also it keeps it cooler at the same time the lights are on, you can see, you can see. Now, in Mr. Singleton's area, Mr. Singleton had migraine headaches, so from time to time, he would turn those lights on. But the lighting from north area, where you see now, shines right into his area, he has a big open window. So just want to make sure you guys know what's going on.
Well, I'm respectful of anyone that has a medical condition, and many people are sensitive to bright lights. So I think in those kinds of circumstances, it's an exception. But I do think it is important, there've been numerous times I've come in as well. I'm not saying just a few complaints necessarily drive the policy, but I think it is important in most businesses that you or most government entities, the lights are kept on to let people know that you're open for business. So again, if someone has an exception to the rule, all we have to do is bring that in and document it when you make an exception. But I will, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but if there's no further comments. Yes.
Thank you. In the time I have been employed with the township, the lights in the office have been on, as best I know, every single day. So I don't know that this motion changes anything other than what is currently being practiced in the township.
Thank you, but it certainly will clarify our positions. So I'll ask for the roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
The motion passes, item Q.
Mr. Burkholder, you skipped the, oh, that's what I thought, you called it P.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think with the, with the change, oh, I was going to table it.
I just wanted to make sure you didn't miss it by accident.
Oh, I appreciate, thank you, thank you. Item O. There's a motion to pause the work hours of the assistant zoning inspector, allowing the president the authorization to resume and set work hours. Do you want me to take this, Mr. Evans? I believe there's been a change in the situation that at this time, I would move to table this.
Yeah, I would support that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, well, if it's tabled.
Oh, you, oh, I'm sorry. So we're on a table, if you said?
Yes, table.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, and thanks for that correction. Roll call, please, on the table.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Item's table, motion on town hall video security.
Yes, I'd like to move the following. One, naming the administrator and president as authorized representative to state security. Two, to direct the administrator to notify state security to pause procurement or installation of the township hall security system authorized in January of 2023. Three, the administrator is directed to determine and report why the second security system was not installed, and if the original system could simply be reinstalled. Four, the administrator is directed to obtain cost to place additional cameras in the public areas of the township hall.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second discussion, rather than we get into a lot of the weeds on this, I mean, I'm going to take discussion from the board. But some of this will have to be coordinated between the president and the administrator. So Ms. Hanson, I think if this motion passes, we can work toward that. But I think it is important, this is the second security system, that it's my understanding, money has been spent on. And so I think the board needs some clarification, you and I can work together and then report back to the board on these specific issues. I'll open it up for the other trustees for comments.
Yeah, I just want briefly to state that the security system is still not installed. It is a concern of mine. I believe there was nothing wrong with the original one, so we might just be able to preserve the data, plug it back in. I spoke with the original contractors, that that would work. So, Ms. McKee, please. I'm speaking, Ms. McKee, I'm. So, and I know $5,000 of that contract was already paid quite a while ago, and again, it was not installed. And the second security system was actually more than the first. The first was $9,000, the second was $10,000. But most of the labor of the first one was running all the wires, all the lines, all the, that's already done. So if anything, the second system should have been much cheaper than the first. So that's it.
Ms. McKee.
Yeah. Did you say you spoke with the original installer of the video?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
Motion to setting agenda creation procedure. This is kind of a detailed procedure, and it's something we've talked about for this last year as far as trying to get these agendas out earlier, trying to get information not only to the public on the website, but really trying to front load this, rather than having the agenda come out the day before the, before the meeting. So the chair will entertain a motion on the agenda creation procedure.
Yeah, I'll move the following. Do I need to read all of these, or just as presented?
No, I don't think we need to read all of them, but we can answer any questions that you or Ms. McKee may have on this.
I'll just move, I'll just.
Yeah, I think you should read them, read them, yeah.
Well, it'll be up to.
That's okay, yeah, I think you should read them, it's on a Republican House stage.
Mr. President.
You should make your motion, mister.
I'll move to, I'll move the following as presented.
In the seven items?
In the seven, one through seven.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second discussion, Ms. McKee, do you have any questions on these items?
I think Mr. Evans should read them.
On behalf of the reading, direct the administrator to compile the trustee meeting agenda with oversight and direction by the president. That's the way it's currently done. Draft agenda items shall be provided to the full board and fiscal officer by the administrator the Monday of the week prior to the regular meeting. Now, what we're saying about that is we'll have a draft agenda at that time that the administrator can begin to build these agendas for all the regular meetings throughout the year because there's many routine things and deadlines that we know about. So it gives administrative staff additional time to go ahead and start preparing these. And then once all the trustees and the fiscal officer have that, we can correspond and give you additional items that you can add to that agenda. And then we would like the third one, other trustees and fiscal officers shall forward to the administrator and president agenda items, agenda additions requested along with the narrative and/or documentation by 5:00 p.m. on the Wednesday prior to the regular meeting, which is the following week. The administrator shall then compile and finalize the meeting agenda. The administrator shall distribute the agenda, meeting packet, and administrators' report to the full board, fiscal officer, and public by noon on Friday. And this is after consultation with the president, as it currently is, or has been last year. The president works with the administrator to finalize that agenda. By noon on Friday, that'll go on the website, it'll go to the trustees, it'll go to the fiscal officer, anyone else beneath that. The meeting packet shall contain all relevant meeting information and supporting material in a single packet and/or file. If you want to send it electronically, the president may alter the agenda creation schedule as required. Sometimes things come in at the last moment and they need to be addressed at the next meeting. So we may have to amend that on occasion. And the administrator is directed to create and maintain agenda templates or lists for all regular trustee meetings for the following 12 months, and begin to populate those agendas with the routine or known items for consideration so that we don't miss important dates, we don't miss contract dates. Now, this will take a little time for the administrator, and I would hope the township secretary to put those things together. We're understanding of that. But one of the big issues was getting this information out ahead of time for transparency, and so the public can have an opportunity. And so by working together, many communities do this, we're kind of ahead of the game. Then it's much easier when it comes to those meetings, that the trustees are better prepared, staff's better prepared, and the council will have, I mean, the citizens have a greater opportunity to participate in the process. It'll take some time to get this moved out, but this is something I've talked about over here, as my other colleagues have as well. So any further discussion?
I do have some discussion.
Sure.
I'm not saying that, just to make it be clear, under Ohio Revised Code, you don't have to have an agenda, okay? We have been privileged to have one. And there's no, yeah, 24 hours is when you have to have it posted if you want to have an agenda. I don't want it to think, look like we've never done it right, so let's make sure that we make it clear, we have done it right. It's been posted, we all, like I said, we don't, 24 hours. But if this is the way this president wants to work it, that's, he can't do that. But to be clear, the previous board, there was no problem.
Now, let me, let me interject here, I don't want to go back and revisit what the practices were or weren't. I appreciate your comments, I like broadly enough with the Ohio Revised Code setting. But this will be a board decision if this practice, and it may be a two-to-one or maybe three-zero, but the intent is really a legitimate intent to try to get more information out sooner to the residents so they have a better opportunity to know whether they want to come or not. This has to do with streaming our meetings and everything else, I support this. I've actually participated in this process in other communities, it works well. And it really helps staff because we can start, and the fiscal officer, we can put a lot of those things in that we need to get initiated now. So two or three months down the road, we're well-prepared to bring that to the board to make a decision. So that's the purpose for this, I appreciate your comments, you've spoken, mister Evans, but please be brief.
Yeah, just briefly, for the last two years, mostly agenda, I've learned the agenda when the public did, usually the day before. And without any input with this. This, again, makes everybody equal, everybody has an opportunity to see what's going to be on the agenda and to add. That's it. We're doing what's right.
I appreciate your patience here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, but we hope to get a lot of this out. And as we go forward, we hope to make these meetings a little more succinct. But I think it's important to kind of set the tone and the direction of the first meetings. So with that said, I appreciate the comments, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Let me just say, I'm, thank you, I'm sorry. I'm more willing to work with the administrator and the staff on this to make this work. The administrator, motion to create your procedural manual for department. I'm sorry, I've got to back up on motion. S, motion to authorize any township sheriff's cruiser routine maintenance repairs outside of factory 40 at Maverick Motors upon approval by the administrator of up to $1,000 for each instance. I'm somewhat familiar with this, but the chair will entertain a motion with explanation.
So moved.
And is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second discussion.
So it says up to $1,000, but the administrator you guys are authorizing are $500? Is that, do I understand that correctly?
That is correct.
So should we be giving her a $1,000, up to $1,000?
Mr. President. This is separate from any other authorization. And just based on the needs, before, the cruisers were repaired without any approval, and then the repairs were approved, which I think is backwards. So this is just giving that authority for up to, for brakes, for oil changes, for leaks, or, you know, giving the administrator specific approval on this, in this amount. Because anything less, I don't think would cover a lot of this stuff.
Again, my question wasn't answered, but you can make it clear to me.
This will be a special circumstance, normals will have the discretion of $500 for other items. But when it comes to the, comes to the cruisers, and the auditor will tell you, you're supposed to get approval for expenditures prior to expending it. Other, if you don't, then it's called a then and now, and that doesn't really help out on the audit. But we know that on some of these cruisers, as the administrator's already reported to, some of these expenses get very, very expensive. You know, nothing's cheap anymore, particularly on these type of vehicles that are running all the time. So this gives the administrator more latitude, more discretion to go ahead and authorize that so that we can keep those vehicles moving in between meetings, so you don't have to come back and try to get additional authorization.
Mr. President, may I ask a question? First of all, let me apologize to you that I have stood before when I've spoken.
You don't need to stand, no, no, stay.
To show my respect, and I.
No, 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 I want you to sit so that the residents can, use your microphone, you don't need to, I'm just a trustee.
Thank you. So I would just ask for clarification or a modification to this motion that it not be limited to Maverick Motor. One of the repairs that has been requested is for a windshield. Um, one of the repairs that has been requested is for a windshield that is being, they proposed to be prepa- um, repaired at a glass.
Richardson glass.
Yeah. So, by limiting this to Maverick Motors, that's going to require that I bring other, um, issues to the board, even if it's less than $1,000. So I would just ask the Board to consider an amendment to this motion to not limit it to Maverick Motors.
Do you have a problem with an amendment, Ms. McKee?
Oh, no, no.
Mr. Evans?
Uh, no, I don't. The only thing is, uh, you know, who's going to be sourcing the vendor on this? I know we've used Maverick Motors, that's why I included Maverick Motors. I think something like the windshield replacement today, uh, Ms. Hanson actually would, would have that authority or does have that authority now on her own. It's under 500. If it was, say, 700, the President could, could authorize that, so there are options. But I have no problem changing that. Uh, does that have any impact, this varying of the O?
Yeah, it has an impact. I can do a blanket purchase on the Alba vendor name, um, for $1,000. Um, but it's for instance, so I would like a total up to maybe 10,000 a year or, an amount you feel appropriate.
Mr. President, I work for Safely. They, uh, those, those, those windshields could be rather expensive.
I'm, I'm sorry, but thank you. Uh, I'll move to make an amendment to make that a blanket certificate, $1,000 per incident, up to $12,000 annually. And as a blanket, you'll be able to use forever, vendor is necessary. And I do appreciate the input because they can get expensive and, so that's, I appreciate those comments.
I'll second that.
And a second to the amendment, any further discussion on the amendment? Harry Dunn, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Any further discussion on the main motion? Harry Dunn, roll call, please, on the main motion, as amended.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Motion to create procedure manuals for departments and position tasks. Chair will entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to direct Administrator to create the procedure manuals for department and position tasks as listed by February 19th and present at the February 20th, 2024 regular meeting. Uh, A, key fob creation, Town Hall and Garage, providing list of those fobs. B, checking access log to buildings, issuing deleting access codes, providing list of individuals with current code. C, providing code access to Township Hall for offsite reviews. D, updating website. E, updating website calendar. F, streaming procedure. G, uh, security camera system access Town Hall and Garage. H, uh, alarm system access, including disarming and arming procedures, Town Hall and Garage. I, how to email distribution on the listserv. J, turning on microphone system and audio recording meetings. K, process for legal notices. And L, uh, new hire process.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, um, I will make, uh, at this time, I will make a, I move to amend that, uh, because that is quite an extensive list.
Yeah.
That that be, that we have draft, uh, and I want to communicate that, that we have some draft idea of how we can. I realize that's going to take some time as a trustee and it'll take some staff time. But I, I do support this because we need that kind of redundancy to know how we do things. And it saves when new employees come in, for example, on new hire, everybody knows the process, the forms. So it does lead to efficiency, but I'll make a motion to revise that, that we have a, a draft list for some ideas for discussion by February 19th. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I.
Second by, by Mr. Evans. Now discussion on the amendment, Mrs. McKee?
Because of fact that, um, as, as we look at this agenda tonight, it looks like there's a lot of pressure, responsibility in our Administrator. Yes. And because of that, I don't think we should have a date set under this. It can be a work in progress, okay? An ongoing progress. I don't think we should set a date that this has to be done by this date.
It doesn't, it doesn't. I, I've amended it to just have some idea on this very soon. Some of this may have already been done, but I concur with you that there's an awful lot on this and that's why I think the Board and the President of the Board need to work cooperatively with the Administrator and the staff to begin initiating some of these. So I think there is a little bit of, uh, wiggle room, if you will, or leniency to be reasonable. I think it's about being reasonable and so, but these are some of the objectives and goals that I, I think are important for the Board to start moving forward on. So, if we can have a discussion at that point, that's my amendment. It's been seconded and do you have anything else, Ms. McKee?
No.
Mr. Evans?
No, I just think that this is very important. I've tried to get this implemented for quite a while and I honestly, I mean, I agree with, with, okay, draft, but a lot of these things are very simple to put in. It's, here's the login, here's the website, you do this. Uh, it's a month and a half, so if, if it's a draft, it should be a very substantial draft. Um, and the longer we go without it, I just think we're more vulnerable.
Roll call on the amendment, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
The amendment passes. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Mr. President, may I ask a question? Um, or make a comment, I guess, too. So, I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying is that this is sort of a concept because, for instance, we don't, we're phasing out the key fobs. They, and we're going to the card system. So, you know, I, what I'm hearing you say is that this is sort of an outline of the type of information that you would like to receive.
And at the, at the, at the, by that meeting date or thereafter that meeting date, then I think you would report that we're no longer using that technology and therefore we've.
Okay. And I will say that this is the first time that I've ever been given any kind of a list and asked to prepare any of these documents.
That's fine. Yes, no, I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Do we have a roll call yet on that?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
Motion to livestream and archive all Township public meetings?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to direct Administrator to begin livestreaming and archiving all Township meetings, including the trustee meetings, zoning, uh, BZA, and any committees.
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead, second.
Okay. This is not making sense to me. So are you expecting our Administrator to be at every meeting? Meaning, the trustee meetings, the zoning meeting, the BZA, and any committees, like the park committee? Um, are you expecting her to be at those meetings, so she can livestream?
That, that is not my expectation. I don't know, but I think, I think it is important. Uh, other communities do BZA, um, we can have staff. I mean, we actually have staff that go to those meetings. So the staff, I don't know if you go to the park, I don't even know if some of the park, the Administrator has. But the Township Secretary goes to some of those. So, again, this is kind of opening up, I think more people need to see what goes on at BZA and zoning commission. And I know in other communities, they do it. This isn't going to happen overnight because I think we're going to have to be better on our technology. But it's something that we want to get on the radar now. And again, it's not something you can just snap your fingers because, but that's going to take some of the training and that ties into why we need the policies and procedures so, and to enable our staff to begin recording these meetings and putting them on. And I've been very clear about my feeling on that, as well as other jurisdictions, that they need to start archiving this and making it convenient for residents and outside parties to see what's going on, actually going on with those meetings.
Can I ask a question, um, President? Um, I know you at one time worked in this capacity as a manager.
That's right.
In different Townships and municipalities.
Correct.
How did they, were you, were you the person that showed up at these old zoning trustee meetings? And I know you did the trustee meetings because you had to, that was your requirement. But the zoning, the BZA, the other committees within, to, to stream this stuff, or do you guys have?
We didn't have streaming capabilities at that, but I can tell you, I, I showed up to almost every park committee. I showed up to BZA meetings. Some of them, we didn't have as many BZA meetings. My recent, most recent as a community development director, I showed up, Council's zoning, BZA. Some of the committee meetings, I didn't show up because we had staff, so I did. But back then, even though it's only been several years ago, we didn't have, we didn't have all these capabilities. So I realize it's a work in progress. But I think it's something that this Township with an over $10 million budget and all the things going on, transparency is really the foundation of, uh, it's educational, too. If you kept making me, and you so desire, you can see what's going on. I have people on the time now, we didn't know that was going in, we didn't know that development. It's hard for everyday person to have the time, but also to keep pace with all the things that are going in the Township. And I think the more we open up the process, I think it's, I think it's better.
So we probably would, may need to change that motion to maybe reflect that, for instance, we know Laura, our, and she's over with those, the zoning and the BZA. Maybe we should make it more clear that our Administrator could work with whomever is the Chair of those boards to, 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 to do those, the, um, stream.
Can I make a quick comment?
Quick comment.
Uh, this motion just directs Administrator to do this. She has, she's over many individuals, she's over the Secretary, uh, she can communicate with others. And again, that's why the policy procedure manuals are in place, so anybody can open that up and determine how to do something. So it's just, she will be in charge of implementing this.
Yeah, I don't want to get too specific on who does what. I think there has to be a balance on common sense, but these are some of the major areas that we want to see some change and will work with staff. They can report back to the Board at this point. And it'll be, it'll be a work in progress. If there's no further discussion, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. President, may I make a point before you move on?
Make it very quickly, please.
I will tell you that our current streaming, um, process is tied to my Township cellphone. It is directed off of my Township cellphone. So unless there is a separate, um, cellphone purchase for that purpose, it's, it's tied to my Township cellphone.
Right, and those kinds of things spring up to me when we work together on that and then we'll work around those technology limitations. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
This next one's important, the hybridized code 505.04. Motion for the Administrator to create and forward to the fiscal officer the annual inventory by 1/8/24 per ORC 505.04. Is there a motion?
Aye, so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
And just to discuss, I have, I know, uh, a list has been provided. Uh, I think there's, the fiscal office still needs to be inventoried, uh, on there. Um, so, but this is ORC requirement, so we just want, want to make sure that that's done and provided. There's always an issue with last years.
And, uh, this goes to what was cited earlier by the Resident as far as this required inventory. And I know it's been somewhat lacking in previous years and so I want to try to get this up to speed. Uh, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President, may I ask you, they, so I circulated, uh, in all of the inventories of the assets last Thursday. If there is additional information that needs to be obtained from the fiscal officer's office, that will have to be input from her. But without, unless there's been comment, or if there's been any, if there's any recommended changes, they haven't been given to me.
I understand that.
Just, just really brief, uh, Board does have access to that office. And I think, uh, she can quickly inventory it. Uh, any specific, uh, like laptop serial numbers, the fiscal officer could do it. But right now, she's very busy with the budget and that. So I would ask that the Administrator have her secretary inventory that office.
Roll call, please.
Can I speak, Mr. President? I already spoke with, um, fiscal officer Barry this evening, and she has equipment at home and needs added. I can't go to her house and do that.
No, I don't.
The office is done, I just don't.
That's our communication.
I don't have her home equipment and she and I discussed that.
So you're taking care of it?
She's going to add her UA equipment.
That'll be great. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion on the public calendar, motion to direct Administrator to have a Township related meeting such as JEZ, JED, NCA, and all Township public. Many meetings on the public Township calendar maintained on the website. I'm going to make the motion to approve this one. I've talked about this for quite some time. Um, I feel.
I'll second.
Thank you, there's a second. We have a lot of meetings here, and just because the JED meeting, suppose, is the JED Board, but we're part of the JED Board, and I attend those meetings, that should be on the calendar. And when I'm told that, well, we don't put it on the calendar because it's not our meeting, I, I just, I, I strongly disagree with that. The new community authority is going to affect our community, the JED, the JEZ. These, these are committee meetings that affect our community and residents ought to have the opportunity to pull up the public master calendar and say, hey, there's going to be a JEZ meeting on this day from 10:00 to 1:00, and then 1:00 to 3:00, whatever they are. So, that's the reason that I support this, because this has not been the case in the past and it's a change that I strongly support. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, no discussion.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion on Township master calendar, motion to direct the Administrator to create and maintain a master internal calendar for the Township, including all Township deadlines, action dates, important dates, expiring terms, and other such matters required for the administration of the Township. Uh, this kind of goes hand in hand with those templates and everything. And it'll be a good reminder for not only staff, but also for the Township trustees what's coming up. And it's designed to kind of preload everything so that we don't miss any dates and that we as trustees will be better prepared to make decisions and take action on those items that are on that master calendar. It'll be similar to the public calendar, but it's going to be an internal working calendar.
Mr. Burkholder, I know there's no motion currently pending and I don't, because I'm not sure a motion is necessary. There is an existing internal calendar that has, as best I know, all of the dates for expiring, um, contracts along with reminders that in 90 days, this is going to expire. There's, um, reminders already on there for, um, board appointments, um, all of the meetings. And so, I, I don't know what other additional information, if there's additional information required, that's not been conveyed. But this is an existing internal calendar with reminders.
Okay, well, I, I apologize for not making the motion. I'll make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, and, uh, I apologize for being out of order there. That's fine, I appreciate what you're saying, I'll work with you on this. But I do want this memorialized as a policy so that, um, we make sure we get as much on that as we can. It's just a work in progress, Mr. Evans.
Just briefly, Ms. Hanson, are, are you talking about the, uh, electronic calendar on, on the outlook in that?
I am.
That, that is far from complete. Um, that is, that is not a, a, a proper internal calendar. There's mo- most, uh, it, it's very bare. Um, so, this is, again, going to memorialize that we need to address everything properly. The, the tip agreements, the DCA, the CRAs, at very specific timelines where we need to respond and we need to elect things, and those are not on there. Um, so, it, we, we've got so much stuff's not on there, so that, that is just inadequate. So, thi- this, I think, directs, uh, a proper procedure and, um, you know, it should be maintained.
Ms. McKee, I'll give you your time.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Hanson is correct. Um, what concerns me on these motions is that these are things that Mr. Evans always had a problem with. And then you bring them here, um, as motions, and some of this stuff should not be because it is already there. So, that's my concern. So, that's all I'm going to say.
And, and I, I do appreciate what you say because I think a lot of this is common sense. But by putting it in a motion, we've got the map and the framework now and it's something that we've worked toward. Everyone makes mistakes, things get missed. But the whole goal here is to have some direction and some guidelines on how we ought to be operating the Township. And I know firsthand, because I've attended probably every Township meeting except maybe four or five in the last two years. And some of these things I've had to deal with and they haven't happened. Such as the noting, posting, other than out on the side of the building here that there's going to be an NCA meeting or a JEZ meeting. And we have millions of dollars coming in, so I understand your point, but I'm going to support this. And so, is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
This last one, um... The motion on number six is the motion to direct the administrator to immediately comply with all public record requests for the video security records from the township's security system as requested in the public record requests. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, first.
Or.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second discussion?
No, I just think this is necessary, the video records are public records. Again, it's just needed. There's been, I've been fighting for years as a resident and then even as a trustee for access. There's case law, it's time that we institute the transparency required.
I pointed to clarification, Mr. President.
No, no, not at this time. I will be happy to clarify with you as the president of the board on this. But I want to give Ms. McKee an opportunity to speak to this issue if she wants to.
Yes, I do. Video security is only there for if there's an incident, okay? It's not there to spy or to surveil anyone. Nobody in this room would be comfortable sitting at your desk and there's a camera sitting over you. So I will not support a trustee myself having access to constantly watch what's going on in this building. It just makes no sense. Now, if there's an incident, then I'll ask for the public record to see what happened and when it happened. But just to sit there and just to watch somebody go to the restroom, get a glass of water, a cup of water, sitting to food or whatever, just not supporting that.
Just briefly, Mr. President, this motion is not about access, it's about public records. There's systems, public records, if any of the public want a specific time period, the entry to that, it's a public record and should be provided, that's all.
Yeah, this really is a public records question. And so with that said, if there's no more discussion from the board, I'll ask for the roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
I have a motion on Southwest Looking Community Water and Sewer Representative Reports. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to direct our appointed Edna Township representative on the Southwest Looking Community Water and Sewer Board to submit a monthly written report to our board and attend in person at one regular meeting every quarter.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second discussion?
I think this is important because of all the activity going on. The new water plant, 85 million, still no way to pay for it. So I think we need to be apprised of what's going on because it does affect us.
Ms. McKee?
Yeah, Mr. Step is our appointed person, a contact on the board for the Southwest Looking Water and Sewer. And just to be clear, he does provide us a report, he has done it for the last couple of years that I've been here. Mr. Evans gets his report first I heard, that he wants Trent Step here at these meetings. Not sure why, but that's something he's asking, but just to be clear. Because I don't want it to look like the guy's never been here to support or to give us information because he asked.
Okay, I previously served on the Water and Sewer. I previously served on the Water and Sewer Board for three years and so I think this is reasonable. I was required by the trustees, which I thought made sense, to come in once a month and give a report, an update to the township trustees. There are many people in this room that pay into the district. And I think a written report is reasonable, yes, you are correct, Mr. Step has made some written reports. Sometimes they're one or two or three months late. I think once a quarter is reasonable. And, you know, when somebody comes and says, well, I want to be reappointed early, we would have a problem coming once a quarter. I just think it's common sense to come in once a quarter, have a nice discussion, submit this report ahead of time. But I think a written report, I mean, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars being spent at the Water and Sewer District. And as you well know, for almost a year, at least from April of this last year, I've gone in and asked questions and knocked out and he answers whatsoever. And the same thing happened here, as you can tell, this is one of my issues, happened here at the town hall. How are you going to pay for an 85 million dollar plant? And we go, well, we're not really sure yet. And we still don't quite have an answer on that. So I think this is reasonable to ask any representative, regardless of what salary they're getting, to come in once a quarter and have a positive discussion with the trustees. And if we have questions, give them to them in advance, but to give a written report for the record, for the residents so that we can put that on the website and there can be some transparency with what's going on at the Water and Sewer District.
Yeah, and I agree with you, I didn't say that, I don't agree with you, I was just giving a background history.
I understand.
Of what he was doing prior, based on the resident enough.
And I appreciate that. But many times, questions have been asked and there's been no answer from the representative. So we just want to throw this up a little bit. Is there any further discussion on this representative process? Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Thank you. Administrator's report.
No, be.
I'm sorry. Yes, go on, Mr. Evans. Chair will entertain a motion to begin the bid process for trash and recycling services. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. McKee, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second discussion?
Yeah, I don't think this is necessary. We, there was a provision in the original contract which allowed the vendor wind waste now, it was waste away, an option to renew it with permission by the township with a maximum of 10% increase. That, we had the meeting in December 26th, I think December 28th, they were notified of our request. Today, they sent a response saying that they will, are willing to move forward with that 10% increase. And I believe the board should accept that. I've done research into the surrounding communities and I'm not sure if you guys have this, but these are what I've been finding as far as the fees go. And this, and even, and this includes Harrison Township, Liberty Township, Pataskla. That Pataskla, their increase over our existing one is 30%. If we accept this 10% increase, theirs is still 19% higher. Liberty Township was 14% higher and Harrison Township was 10% higher. Now, I think ours, looking at the contract provisions of these other entities, they're more restrictive on what they take. This contract with wind waste, they have to take everything. And there's other provisions which really benefit our customer, our residents in this matter. Where like I said, the other entities, they recently bid and their costs are higher and their contracts more, and services are more restrictive. So I think it would be a benefit to our residents to extend it for the three years that the 10% indicated and lock that savings in, in lieu of bidding.
The Chair would like to recognize Ms. Hanson, since you've been in contact with Wind Waste. Do you have anything you want to add to this since their response has been fairly recent?
Thank you, I will say that I've not had an opportunity to actually analyze it and certainly not to the extent that Mr. Evans asked. I will say that Wind Waste has been very responsive to us in terms of any concerns that have been given to them. I think it's a good benefit to the township that they make two mailings a year. So for instance, for our recent park survey, not only did they mail that to all of the residents, they printed it. I sent them a PDF on email and they took care of all of the printing and postage in order to mail that park survey out for the township. So that was, that was a huge benefit to the township. So in terms of the numbers, I haven't had an opportunity to analyze those.
That's why I wanted you to have an opportunity, Ms. McKee, go ahead.
Um, we just got this, but, you know.
Are you okay if we put this on the agenda for the 16th for consideration? Because I want to give both the administrator and the trustees an opportunity to look at the numbers. I think it's a good overview of what Mr. Evans said, but I want the community to have an opportunity too. So I know that that came in recently, so I think, let the administrator.
And just briefly, if I can, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
The original contract calls for the extension to modify the original contract, inserting the new terms. So I think we require a review by the prosecutor. And then also, one of the other benefits in our contract that most others don't have, and I know a lot of people are, or some people are taking advantage of, is if you're not medically able to get your carts down to the curb for collection, they will actually come to your garage or beside your house and bring it down for you. So if you have medical necessity for that, many places will charge for that. So that is another benefit. So I would, I think we should definitely take this up on the 16th. Because just to give them time to, you know, that they're continuing that. If we did not have that letter back today, I would say we should probably move forward with at least preparing the paperwork for bid. But I'd like to make a motion if it's okay to table this till the 16th.
Before we get to the discussion, you brought up a good point, Ms. Hanson. You have the authority to go ahead and forward that to the prosecutor so that we, I think that's a very good point, just to make sure everything. But the Chair will entertain a motion to table this issue until date certain of January 16th, 2024. Is there a second to the motion to table? Second by Ms. McKee, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
And thank everyone for that discussion, so we can move that forward.
Just to clarify, was that Mark and Rosalind on that?
Theory and Rosalind.
That's where I got confused, I wasn't sure. It was Mark and Rosalind, right?
Two.
That's what I thought.
Administrator.
He was entertaining a motion, that's why I was clarifying, because Mark had earlier said he would table.
I started to be entertaining, but I didn't.
Hey, I was following, you were testing me, weren't you?
Ms. Hanson, because the meeting has run long, if there's something in your report you feel we need to, and you can, if you use your microphone, you don't need to come to the podium, I prefer you. You can talk from right there so that we can hear you. But is there anything pressing that needs to come before the board at this time?
Well, I would say that the most pressing issue that is before the board is receipt today of the resignation of our zoning inspector. And I would ask for approval to post the position of our zoning officer on Indeed with a salary commensurate with experience, asking candidates to notify us of their salary requirements.
Who is certainly filling in for this vacancy now?
Well.
Our assistant zoning inspector?
Correct. I don't know if he has capacity to fill in full time, but I do believe he has some capacity to be here at least portions of nearly every day.
And how many hours would you say would be that he can get coverage?
Um, oh, he's here, he's right there.
Mr. Letell, would you care to clarify what your availability is since?
The only time, I mean, things have really opened up for me because I was former grand jury every Wednesday, so that's done. And then I'm also, you know, of course, I think, I got, just like, once in a while I have like a doctor's appointment or something like that. But other than that, I can probably do what you guys want me to do, it's up to you.
Could you be here every day, partial days?
Absolutely.
Any comments from the trustees?
The one thing that I would state as far as the position, I think maybe we should approve posting contingent on the president and administrator working out the details, job, you know, whatever we're advertising. But I think we should also probably advertise for a full-time zoning assistant. We're getting that much busier, especially with these other projects coming along. We're going to have a lot more inspections and that, I think now would be the time to maybe fulfill that. Or consider, I believe I heard you on the campaign transition. But I'm open to anything, but I do think we need to fill that pretty quickly.
Ms. McKee?
Yes, sir, thanks for, a zoning inspector is very knowledgeable on a lot of things as far as zoning. Here you go, because you've worked around him for a long time. But John Singleton had the background, he was an inspector, fire inspector, an investigator. So he knows the layup of township, he's been in this area for a long time. We had a part-time gentleman that worked with us for a while. He didn't work out, we thought we could train him to move on to become what John is so John can eventually retire. So that never happened. I had discussions to try to get somebody to give him part-time, it's hard to find somebody with the experience and the knowledge. I personally talked to a few firemen that are retired, that kind of have that background. They're just not willing to come to work full-time, they just want something part-time. So Freddie, you're it. We need you to, you know, that's a good idea, that we could keep them, I appreciate that we could, because you've been around for a while and he has some knowledge, so that's, that's great suggestion.
Just briefly, I don't think we should be looking at firemen for zoning inspector or anything. We need a professional that's been trained and experienced to come in and that, so. I would leave it to the president to make that decision on what to post.
Well, let me, I would ask the board, I think we need to give Mr. Letell, I certainly think he should continue in the part-time capacity given the circumstances. I will ask, what's the pleasure of the board regarding how many hours a week? Do you want to limit it to 32 or 30 as the demand dictates? I'd like to have some input. Township administrator, I mean, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, but since this resignation just came in this morning, I think it's important that we kind of at least have direction for the part-time or the assistants, I mean, inspector to have some idea tonight how we're going forward tomorrow.
I appreciate it, I don't know that there might be some insurance or other HR concerns if Mr. Letella is working 32 hours or more.
Does it have to be under 32?
That's my understanding, is it would have to be under 32 hours without offering full benefits and, you know, be considered a full-time employee at that point. So I would suggest, unless it is the board's pleasure for that to offer a change from part-time to full-time, that that needs to be a consideration.
Yeah, I think we want to keep it, we've already got it set up on part-time. So I would ask the board, the other trustees to make a motion here tonight that we continue that part-time employment with the condition that we coordinate with the township administrator to make sure that it's considered part-time and not a full-time position as it relates to benefits. I'm not quite certain what the current arrangement is with Mr. Letella. But is the, we're kind of discussing this, but do you feel good with that kind of a motion here tonight?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Well, okay, I'll make the motion. Second by Mr. Evans, discussion, Ms. McKee, go ahead.
Well.
I'm kind of going to medic here, so, I mean, I'm 67 years old, so it's, I don't need any service, that's for sure.
Well.
Are you good with that, Ms. McKee, as far as going forward for the short term here, with that arrangement?
Yeah, I mean, whatever route he wants, whatever works for the administrator and him works it out. That's kind of how I, it's been that way, it's passed off.
I've got no further discussion under, let's get that part done and then I'll come in on the position.
Mr. Burkholder, could you restate your motion just?
My motion is to continue part-time employment with the Edna Township part-time zoning inspector with the condition that we comply with the human resource regulations regarding part-time employment and within those regulations.
Thank you. He had already moved it, I wasn't 100% sure how his motion was.
Thank you, I want to make sure to get that straight, so no further discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now, my comment as far as advertising, I don't feel comfortable looking forward with advertising yet, because I, I haven't seen the current job description. I'd like to see, and this is my opinion, you, you trustees can chime in as well. I'd like to see the job description, I'd like this to be on the 16th. I realize time is of the essence. But the zoning inspector, zoning administrator, planner is a very, very, very critical position here at the township. So I want to make sure that if we have an opportunity, I just don't want to take the current, quite frankly, job description, put it out there and get applications when I haven't even seen it yet.
I sent it to you today.
Okay, but I haven't, I haven't reviewed that, so I'll be honest, I haven't reviewed that. And so I'd rather have, the 16th will be here before you know it, and we may want to even create a new position. And I'd like to at least have the opportunity to explore that. And since Mr. Lattell has been working for us off and on for quite some time, I feel confident that we can get to that next milestone of working with him and with the administrator. So that's why you, I'll open it up, Ms. McKee, you can go first.
No, I mean, I think that's great. I know you mentioned, um, I guess having a full-time zoning inspector.
Well, zoning administrator, but I'd like to look at somebody else who has some planning experience and some, so that we have some internal thing here rather than always. And the fact that we're up doing our land use plan, and the fact that we're probably going to look at redoing our zoning code, modernizing our zoning code, I think having that extra level of expertise here in the township would be helpful in the, in accomplishing those goals. Mr. Evans, you got thoughts?
Uh, just quickly, I think it provides, uh, the necessary time to do the due diligence with you.
So at this time, there won't be a motion to move forward with that advertising at this time? But I, I hope to bring some information, which I'll pass on as quickly as possible, on the possibilities, and then we'll bring it to the board and see what you want to do.
Did we take a vote on the motion for Freddie? Okay. Um, Mr. Burkholder, you asked me to, um, request for the township to provide a door prize for the Lucky County Township Association meeting on January 20th. Mr. Van Buren said that they are looking for a small item, $10 or $20. I'm asking for authority to purchase a $20 gift card from Sheets and provide the gift card in one of our imprinted township bags for use as a door prize.
Good idea, so we've done that before. Is it again that thing? Okay. So will I, Ms. McKee, is there a second?
Uh, yes, sir.
Second. Further discussion, thank you. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
And we did get the roll call, was it?
Yes.
Just want to make sure.
And then the only other issue I have that's particularly time-sensitive has to do with, um, the fact that the township has paid for our deputies to wash their cruisers at Moomoo Car Wash. The company that owns Moomoo has moved to a different platform that requires that we guarantee a minimum of five washes per month. The deputies would access the platform by an app. The cost for wash would be $6 for a basic wash, or $12 for a signature wash. Lieutenant Carson believes that one wash per week, per vehicle is reasonable. For the basic wash, that total cost would be $1,248 annually, which is significantly greater, uh, greater expense than currently appropriated at, I believe, $300. We may want to consider having the cruisers washed at the garage with our power washer. Mr. Coakley said that it is, that that's possible, depending on coordination of schedules. We would want to work out the details so that our crews, the work that our crew does is not unduly interrupted. Uh, and this may not be feasible, given the deputy work shifts, but it seems to be worth exploring, given the increase in the cost. But since the service that we have been, um, providing to the cruisers in terms of having them washed, um, is now halted, and they don't have the ability to use any kind of a service for wash, I wanted to bring this to the board's attention.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, yeah?
Uh, yes, I spoke to Representative Moomoo, uh, and same one that I did when we recently got this implemented. Uh, there's just going from the, the Bob's, the card, the RFID chips to the app. Uh, it, it's pretty easy to set up, uh, they've got videos, 50-second videos, uh, on there. Uh, we can limit many things, uh, that way. Uh, uh, I think that's the best way to do this. It maintains the vehicles, gets the salt off them enough, because they are our vehicles. As far as having a road crew do it, I, I think that would not be any direction we should pursue. Uh, just the, the, the cost and labor would far exceed anything that we would spend here, because it's not just hourly cost, it's benefits, it's the, and our road crews get busier and busier. So I think we just have to move forward and get it set up, it's already authorized.
And you have to amend the appropriations.
That's what I understand, because I think the biggest change is that it's going from unlimited monthly to it is a per-wash. Um, and we have to, we will be billed for a minimum of five washes, but if each of our four cruisers washes once a week, which is what Lieutenant Carson recommends as being reasonable, we're far exceed five washes.
Yeah, Ms. McKee, do you have one?
Yeah, um, well, I know Moomoo recycles the water, so it kind of makes it a little bit. But then if we use it here at our, uh, road back over in our garage, what's the cost of our water going up? You know, would that end up costing us more money? I see, uh, Bubba over there shaking his head, you know, um.
I, I'm from Moomoo's form, but then I think both your points are well made.
Yeah.
Whatever that cost and the time, and I give full support of keeping those vehicles looking sharp and clean, they represent the sheriff, they represent that the township. Looking at, we could amend the appropriations to it.
Ju- just quickly to clarify, it wasn't unlimited washes previously, it was per-wash. They really didn't use it that much. Uh, but I would say there would be no need to amend the appropriations right now.
No, not now.
Uh, because there's enough funds in there for the CPO program setup, and then we can do that.
They build them.
Yeah, they do, but I have a question. There's another competitor out there, Zulu, which is, uh, over here off of, uh, East Broad Street in Pataskala. What's their cost versus Moomoo? I understand Moomoo has their corporate office here in Edna. They are, uh, business here in Edna, so I get that. So, but my question will still be, the cost, what, what is it going to cost the township if we ended up homeless, or, I mean, should we see some other bids out there?
Yeah.
Just an ideal.
Ju- just quickly, when, when the listeners put this in, uh, they were the cheapest, they, they did give a discount, and they are typically, for fleet accounts, it requires five vehicles, they're allowing us to just move forward.
Right, they just said that we, we, no matter how many vehicles we register, we will be billed a minimum of five washes per month.
Right.
And I think we could restrict the, the cream and the cream, or what it was proved for before was the minimum.
We just want the basic, the one you just wash the car, not wax, tire cleaning, or basic wash.
So maybe Ms. Varian can answer this question. My concern was having the correct amount appropriated for the expenditure. If we leave it at 300, is that going to satisfy your requirements for having an appropriate amount? Oh, I have, I'm sorry to say appropriated and appropriation, the, the correct amount appropriated?
It's fine for now, the way it is, and then I can just do a sort of transfer. It doesn't have to be a resolution or, you know, the appropriations, we just have to do a sort of transfer.
Because I don't think that we can restrict, I guess I don't really know the answer to this. I don't think we can restrict it, that once we've spent $300 that they.
No, we, we won't. So I'll make the motion when we forward with the proposal as presented by Township Administrator Hanson. And I think all the points are well taken, time and cost, and then the convenience, so those deputies can get that done at any time, they don't have to have a, you know, schedule.
I didn't have another question. What's the closest route that our deputies are using? Are they using one down on Broad Street, all the way into Rillsburg, uh, in front of the Value City Furniture, down in that area?
I think they use one in the north.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Such a good question. Is there a second on that motion? My motion?
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and, and just for history, typically, uh, our invoices are $28 a month. The, the deputies aren't using that much, maybe they're doing them at home, they, they were doing it on their own before, um, so, um, I, I don't think it's going to be extravagant.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Hanson?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, fiscal officer reported, Ms. Varian?
I don't think you took a vote on your, on the.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution of employment, Ms. Varian?
Well, I will respond. I'll move to approve resolution number, there we go, 24 dash 01 dash 02 dash 05, uh, to approve purchase orders as presented.
Second discussion. Here, you have your own call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Then I'll move to approve the payments as listed.
Any discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, what's with the trustee comments?
Uh, the only thing I've got is, uh, regarding, uh, the resignation of the zoning inspector. Uh, I had concerns about the, uh, vacation and the, uh, complying employee handbook. I, uh, briefly spoke to the attorney, uh, today, uh, about that, and he was saying that the way it was being done wasn't correct, so I would advise, uh, you as the president and or the administrator to contact Ben Albrecht regarding the proper procedure, because I don't believe he could just, just take the three weeks vacation.
Well, let's, let me get into the details, I've been apprised of that, but let's, let's go ahead and I will work with the township administrator.
I just want to alert the board.
And, and let the, the whole board know that we'll, we'll sort out what the appropriate resolution is on that.
Okay.
If it's necessary, the next meeting, have the executive session on that matter, we will.
Okay, and then the only thing, other thing I said is, uh, wanted to announce, or I don't know if you were going to talk about the solar.
Go ahead, yep.
Exclusion, that at the next regular meeting, uh, January 16th, uh, I, I'm going to recommend the board, uh, on the agenda, put the resolution on solar exclusionary zone.
Very good. We, we wanted that at the second meeting, so that the public and everyone would know that that issue's coming forward, you'd have a little advanced time rather than putting it on this, this full agenda. So that will be on there. And the, uh, the OTA conference, which, uh, Ms. McKee has talked about before, is coming up in February, I believe February 1st is the Township, Ohio Township Day. So, um, hopefully, we do some work in the schools and stuff. I think it's good to educate people what townships are and what they do, and what our requirements are, so that's coming up as well. I want to wish everyone a happy new year. Thanks for your, your patience. We've got a lot going here, I think we got a great start, and we hope to see you back on, uh, the 16th. Ms. McKee, uh.
I had no comments, but just want to, well, I guess I do say happy new year. Hopefully we'll move forward in this township with some good stuff going on.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And again, thank all of you. And regarding Spinel, um, I do play, I have been following up on what's going on there. I don't think that some of the resolution has been fully done regarding Campbell Ditch. They were going to order some equipment, but I believe there's still some lighting issues and some sound issues, stormwater issues, and some landscaping issues on that project. So I appreciate the reminder and the encouragement to continue. I know we've had some residents here that are affected by that. I know, since I see some of the people I've worked with, we still have issues on Link Street as well. And so there's a lot of different things we're going to be working on, but we also have a lot of new projects coming forward, and also opportunities. So I, I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues as, as we move forward. So again, thanks for coming. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkholder?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
For the record, it's been, um.